Ladies and gentlemen, today is November 12th at 6:09 PM, where we will be having the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Call to order at 6:09 PM. Madam Clerk, can we please take roll call?
Hassan Ahmad.
President.
Moby Dunne.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
President.
And Tom Winsell is absent. Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Also, keep in mind to those at Zoom and those in the audience, I had a conversation with Councilman Winsell. He is dealing with some things at home. He gives his blessings and, you know, his apologies for missing tonight's meeting. And so he just wanted me to state that they didn't want me to give out too much information as to what he is dealing with, but our prayers are with him and his family, and hopefully a speedy recovery for him and his entire family.
Yes.
Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to have our new DPW Director lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue on with this, I see that we do have a ton of people on Zoom and here in person. I do ask that you guys keep it respectful. Nothing from the audience. Chief Swope, if anything gets a little out of tension and I request that somebody gets, you know, has to be escorted, I please ask you to grant that for us, okay? I don't want anything to be out of line. We don't need anybody, you know, speaking from the audience. Just keep this respectful and have everybody the right three minutes to speak. Next up, we have Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of November 12, 2024, as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have approval of the minutes, minutes of the regular meeting of October 22, 2024.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell.
Thank you. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 22, 2024, as submitted.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Malinowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, it's public hearings on, or public hearing and members of the public, you have three minutes to speak on anything on the agenda or about anything else that you want. You only have three minutes. You must state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. After the three minutes are up, if you have requested for an additional minute, I will recall and I will just remind me if you did ask for the additional minute. Thank you. How you doing, sir? Please state your name.
Yeah, give it to the clerk.
Please state your name, the street you live on, and the city you reside in. Also, let me know if you're speaking as a resident of where you're from or are you speaking as the, speaking at your official capacity?
Yeah, my official capacity, my name is Nick Zapko. I'm the President of the Police Supervisors Union.
Please go state your name and the street you live on.
Yes, sir. I live in Dearborn and I'm on Mildred Street.
Thank you. You've also asked for an additional minute.
I have, yes, sir. Appreciate it. My name is Nick Zapko. I'm speaking as the President of the Police Supervisors Union, as I said. I'm here on behalf of the Union in regards to the pending appointment of the Director of Police Operations, which is scheduled for tomorrow. This was scheduled during the originally promotional ceremony for one of our officers to the rank of Sergeant. I'm going to read through this. I made this size 14 font so I could see it, so I'm sorry if I have to look down a lot. At the September 5th City Council meeting, special meeting, the study session, the City Council adopted a motion to amend the police budget and remove the vacant position of Director of Police Operations with the funds going back to the Police Department. This was motion 24-413. It was agreed by the Council that the Mayor may bring back this position in the future with a qualified person with the Council's approval and that the Mayor may not introduce any new director position nor spend the money without City Council's approval. On September 6th, the following day, the Dearborn Heights Police Facebook page posted that the Mayor had appointed Mr. Hussein Farhat as the interim Director of Police Operations, pending ratification of a collective bargaining agreement from the Police Supervisors Union. This was not ratified by us. In fact, our Union has been in negotiations with the City over our contract during which the director position was being bargained for. The Union voted down the initial offer and the City subsequently withdrew its offer and filed for mediation. This shows that the City bargained in bad faith as the Administration obviously intended to go forward with the appointment regardless. The appointment of a new director scheduled for tomorrow was not made public as has been done previously through public postings and social media postings. What was done through private invitation only, which goes against the transparency of the Administration as repeatedly stated practices. Additionally, this appointment violates our contract, which states that the vacant director position must go through the Act 78 process. Specifically, our contract states, "It is further agreed that should the City fill the director's positions in the future, those positions will be filled in accordance with Act 78 provisions." In layman's terms, the promotion of the director comes from our Union. It is promoted from our Union through the Act 78 promotional process. That's very clear in our contract. The wording is unambiguous. Act 78 is recognized by the City. It's on the City's government website. The Commissioners are listed. The Commission President was appointed by the Mayor himself. Act 78 is a Police and Fire Civil Service Commission, established to provide civil service system for full-time paid members within the Police and Fire Departments. It oversees all matters related to the appointment, employment, and promotion of all full-time members in the Fire and Police Departments. The appointment of the new director violates Act 78 itself. Michigan compiled laws, Section 38.516, which describes the penalty for violating Act 78 is very clear. It states whoever makes an appointment to the office or selects a person for employment contrary to the provisions of this act or willfully refuses or neglects otherwise to comply with or conform to any of the provisions of this act or violates any of such provisions shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor. The appointment of the new director will result in the immediate filing of agreements by our Union. It has resulted in the Command Officers Association filing an unfair labor practice charge against the City already. That charge was served on the Mayor this morning. I have copies for all of you if you would like to distribute the copies. I'm here to appeal to the City Council to do the right thing. We, you know, we ask that you do everything in your power to stop this appointment and avoid unnecessary litigation against the City that's going to result in taxpayers having to pay money. It's not our Union's position to say whether or not Mr. Farhat or any other individual is qualified. It's up to the Council Chair, the Council Members in Act 78 to determine. We are merely asking that you do the right, morally, ethically. Is it timer?
Thank you, Mr. Zapko. I'm sorry, I'll let you finish up your last sentence.
Yeah, we're just asking you to do the right thing and follow collective bargaining agreement and Act 78 rules.
I just want to correct you on a few things. The City Council will not make any decision on that because the Council does not make any appointments nor does the Council, nor does any director at will position come before the Council. But as you can, as you stated in the beginning of this, this position was asking the Administration just to bring it before the Council, and which it didn't. So whatever the decision happens to the Administration, I want to make it very clear because I know there's a lot of misinformation that was going around that the City Council was the reason why you guys, everybody's in here today because the City Council didn't want this. This does not go before the City Council. Whoever told you that has been giving you misinformation. This body here has never said who's going to be the Parks and Rec Director, who is going to be the Police Chief, who is going to be the Chief of Staff. The only decision that the Council makes is who the Corporation Council is because they're supposed to represent this body as well and then also our Assessor's Office. Those are the two things that come before the State Council. So whatever anybody has said that the City Council is the blame and the City, because, you know, I've already heard this today before coming into this meeting. If the Command Officers Union opposes based on their Union, that is strictly on the Command Officers Union. It has nothing to do with the City Council. If they come to an agreement and they make that agreement, from what we know, there's supposed to be a hearing on November 20th for this X, for this very same thing that is happening and taking place. A judge is going to rule on this on November 20th or at least hear open arguments or oral arguments, which I also ask from this body to not get a little bit too adept on this conversation because there is an injunction against this body regarding the whole appointments of these two positions. So the Council can't even talk about it because the judge has told us, don't talk about it. Council Chair. Yep, Councilman Saab next and then Councilman Coniston.
Mr. Zapko, just for the record, I want to put, so there is no Union negotiations going on or anything that's been agreed on by the Union, just for the record.
The City withdrew the offer and it's filed.
I'm hearing otherwise today from certain calls. They're saying that you guys had agreed.
No.
Or there is no agreement, there is no negotiations in the process.
There was no agreement that was signed off on. It was not ratified by the Union.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Coniston.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and maybe you can explain, just so people know about Act 78, how the officer has to go through testing and there's a pool of applicants.
Correct.
That have been tested by officers in other departments and it goes through to make sure that it's a promotion based on merit. So maybe you could talk a little bit about how Act 78 works.
So I won't get too far into it because it's more specific for them, but I mean, it's a promotional process. They do have to post any promotions for a certain period of time. Generally, it's a written and an oral board, so they have to pass with 70% on the written test and then they have to get an oral board score. And then it's taken from there, the top three seniority that pass are chosen for who gets promoted. So it's all standardized promotional testing process that we followed. I've been here 18 years and it's been around well before I came here, so I don't know how long the.
Our charter requires it, thank you.
1964, so it's been here, it's recognized by the City since 1964, so.
Thank you. Any other members from the Council? Thank you, sir, you can be seated.
Thank you.
Anyone else in person? How you doing, sir? Go Lions, eight and one. That's been around before Act 78. I think it was the last time, it was 1954 was the last time we were eight and one, so.
Hey, at least they're doing it this year.
Hey, they're doing it.
I wasn't born, I wasn't born.
John Baroness, I live on Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm here as a resident. It's kind of ironic because I heard the earlier session talking about permits being granted while there is a moratorium and all that, not to get into it, but I'm here for a permit. Longtime resident, been living here since 1993, have done numerous improvements with the house, have never had a problem with a permit like I'm having now. I hired a company to put in a patio, remove the existing patio and install a new one. No additional square footage. I'm not putting an addition onto the house. I'm not putting a garage on the property, just replacing an old existing patio. Tomorrow will be three weeks since that application for a permit has been submitted.
I want to stop you for a second. Are you, is this your neighbor? I have spoken about yours with Rick and Rick has been out of, out for I think almost seven or eight days. He's been extremely ill and has been dealing things with his family. No excuses, but I believe your permit might even be ready. Have you checked City Hall today?
You know, I didn't want to go back to City Hall. I've been there several times.
I can tell you, I believe it's ready because I think he told me and I just forgot to share the information. This would have avoided all of this today.
Two to three days was usually the norm. I mean, whether it was windows, a roof, heating and cooling, electrical, whatever. But when you go to City Hall and as I hear is it, it's under review. How can you be reviewing something for three weeks? I understand if somebody's out sick, obviously. But my question then would be, if you're out sick, does everything stop? No permits get approved? Nothing happens? Nothing moves?
No, not that, and I don't think that's the answer. I should have reached out to Angela today. I know she reached out to me and I believe Rick had told me, hey, that permit on Dwight has been approved. I just, I failed to call you.
So you tell me if I go to the Building Department tomorrow morning after I leave.
Tomorrow before you go in or you can even give me a call?
That's what I wanted to bring to the attention because I can understand if somebody's out sick, but if people are trying to get things done, I mean, come on, three weeks is way too long.
I agree with you.
I can see two to three days, three to five business days, but three weeks?
Three to five business days would technically be almost, be almost a week and a half because we're only operative a week and four days.
And I don't know why we're closed on Fridays. That's a whole nother issue. I don't know if that's a cost savings thing. I don't know, this is the only City Hall that's closed on Fridays. It's like, don't you want a 40-hour work week instead of a 32?
You get paid 36, though.
I'm done.
Thank you. I will, I will take care of that with you tomorrow. Ange, give them my number, please. Thank you. Go Lions! I already spoke with him. It's all set. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Angela Van Agus, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. My complaint is on 11B, the Airbnbs. We've been talked about this for a long time. I live next door to one and if anybody resides next to one, it's not a fun thing. I've had prostitutes for, at my house, garbage thrown all over my lawn, people parked on my lawn, not being able to park down the streets. You can ask the Police Department, there was a, in June, I had them there for seven consecutive days because of all the ruckus going on in the neighborhood. We have had some people who are quiet, but regardless, they still park on my lawn. People are having problems getting in and out of their homes and you don't know who's living there. I moved into the community to live in a home, not to live next door to a Super 8 motel. And reading this ordinance, there's just, just so many, so many things on here. And one of the biggest, biggest things that I point out here is that prior to the adoption of this ordinance, short-term rentals of single-family dwellings were not permitted anywhere within the city of Dearborn Heights. Bull. I don't know who wrote this, but if that's the case, you want to tell me why I've had Airbnb next door to me for almost two years and nothing's being done? And I just don't understand how we got the Building Department who's going to supposedly look after all this stuff, issue permits, check how many people are there, going to check on people who can't be parked in the street and only in the driveway? We can't get the police to come out on garbage day to ticket residents who are parked during garbage day? And I know we're short-staffed. I'm not blaming you, the Police Department, for that at all. I know what's going on. There's no transparency of anything that goes on in the City. But I'm just asking Council to take into consideration, unless you've lived next door to one and know everything that goes on and the headaches that people have, I'm asking you to not vote, not take this into consideration at all. We don't need them in our community.
Thank you, Angela. Anyone else in person? Please, yep, stand up. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
And you also have three minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amal. I live on Baldwin Street. I'm here today with my husband. We purchased our home in 2009 and we were pretty young. We were very excited, very happy with the house. We did everything that we thought we should. Come to find out, 15 years after, my husband had noticed we've, seems like our taxes are really, really high. So I think he asked, like our neighbors, we became very close with certain neighbors and we were paying a lot more for a much smaller house. So we came to the City finally and we kind of inquired, like, why are our taxes much higher? Come to find out, we were never put in as homestead. And so we requested, I think we only got back three years worth, but it was about 15 years that we've been charged extra approximately $1,000 every single year, paying extra taxes on our property. So as a law-abiding citizen, I pay my taxes on time. I get a lot of taxes taken out of my paycheck, everything like that. Do everything that I should do. I follow the law, follow the speed limit. I just don't think it's very fair. Small personal story, too. Our accountant made a mistake on our personal taxes when we submitted. Come to find out a few years after, of course, it was about $1,000 that we were supposed to pay out and something with like our daycare fees and things like that. It was about a $1,000 difference. Years after, the federal government came back and asked for it. Of course, they got it and, you know, they got the interest for it as well. So it's just very ironic when it comes to the hard-working individual that the government can take taxes and only give back a certain amount, whereas, you know, as an individual, you're not allowed to do the same. Not that I'm trying to take extra taxes, but, you know, I'm here because I really would appreciate getting back the taxes that have been taking, extra taxes that have been taken from me.
How many, you have that figure?
Just based on the amount that we got back to the three years that we were allotted, the retro three years that we were allotted, I could, I estimated it at approximately at least $1,000 a year.
Council Chair. Council Chair. Before, I know Councilman Ahmad is pretty sharp at this because he worked with them, but I have one quick question for you.
Yes.
When we said that there was a mistake, as it was never filed as homestead, could you, and this was 15 years ago, you're saying?
We purchased the home in 2009 and, and just again, the irony of it, for 15 years, we never once got inspected, not being homestead. Not once got inspected by the City.
As like a renter, as not homestead?
Yes, yes.
My question to you is, was the mistake being done by the, by the Assessor's Office 15 years ago? Or can you look at your title work and say, you know, you never filed in that work with your title company, so therefore it was all landed on.
Residency exemption.
You know, the exemption form.
No, I think it was filed, but.
We filed it, but I'm not sure, like.
I think they, you guys had the paper, but it wasn't like stamped back then. I'm not sure how.
We brought the papers.
But they do have it?
They had it in the City, yes.
Council Chair. I'm going to listen to Councilman Ahmad, then Councilman Coniston, and I'll go to Councilman Saab.
Thank you, Council Chair. I'm sorry you guys go into this, but technically it's not stamped, it's not filed. And sorry to say, but the state law, they only can go retroactive three years. It's not the City. So the money that was already you guys paid went to the State, went to the County. So it's not like City money to disperse and it's the state law, only they can go three years back. So sadly, it's the resident's mistake or the homeowner's mistake that you guys didn't file on time.
And that's what we have been told, but the thing is, like, what I'm looking at it this way, you know, like for rental property, they usually like, they send like this, like notification.
Hundred percent, this is what the City.
Why we haven't received anything for like 15 years?
Because there's different departments, so this is not lacking the Assessor's Office. It's a, it's a mistake from a different department in the City that they should, it's the ordinance and the Building Department that should be looking, you know, towards, you know, rental properties, inspection every three years or every time they move, but it's not the Assessor's Department.
But again, if it's not listed as homestead, it should be then listed as.
Which would have caught the mistake early on and you would have saved a lot.
In every three years, you guys are supposed to make.
Every two years or change of tenant or CFO.
It should have been caught way back when. I mean, I'm not trying to place blame really not.
Hundred percent, but I'm not sure if this body has the power to do something like.
We don't.
Because we don't even have the money, you know what I mean? So I'm not sure even.
No, he doesn't mean we don't have the money as, we don't have it in our account. We don't have the money because the money's collected and sent to the County and the State. So like the money doesn't come to the City of Dearborn Heights. When you pay your taxes, there's a percentage that's, you know, kept here, but there's money that's going to the State and the County.
Well, I understand, but again, the federal government, the State, federal government, if, if they take, you know, if we don't pay our fair share of what they calculate we should be paying in taxes, it doesn't matter if it's 30 years ago. They will collect every single penny and charge me interest on that. So why, why can, why can we not request from the State, from the federal or whoever it gets dispersed back out? That's money that shouldn't be, shouldn't have been theirs. Why can we not request it as they do when it's?
Have you tried reaching out to the County, County Treasurer or the State?
Yes.
Council Chair. I'm going to have Councilman Coniston first and then Councilman Saab.
Yeah, as Councilman Ahmad said, by state statute, you can only go back three years. There's a recent Court of Appeals decision, though, that came out and there's different rules if it was the Assessor's fault, but you probably got a tax bill every year and it said on your tax bill, you know, homestead 0% or 100%. But your next step is to go to the tax tribunal and see if there's, you'll be granted any relief. So if the local assessor says no, we can only go back three years, you appeal it to the tax tribunal. There's a lot of litigation over that issue. There's a recent, if we can get your email, I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
Written Court of Appeals decision on that issue.
I would appreciate it.
Can you have her fill out this form? And then Councilman Saab.
I just wanted to make a comment. There is that statement, we were, we were pointed it out when we came and inquired in the City, but it is so small, you really need a magnifying glass for it, but.
So just, I was going to ask, just give George your information and I'm going to follow up with the assessor to send me the documents here and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
I got, I promise you, we share your guys' frustration, like, it's very unfair. Believe it or not, I have a friend that lived on Baldwin, surprisingly, and they just moved because their taxes were extremely high. Then I guess they realized after they sold their house, maybe it was just ironic that it happened to be Baldwin, but he sold his house, moved to Garden City and he said, I said the whole time your home, your house wasn't homestead. You know, but, but it really, it fell back on the title company that closed their home because.
Yes. Get off your flesh. I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, it's blinding me, sorry.
So I will, I will also follow up with you on that. Just, George, add me to that email, please, or as well as with Councilman Saab and maybe Councilman Ahmad and maybe the Assessor as well. And we'll dig deeper onto that. I appreciate you guys coming in here tonight.
Maybe they can make a claim under their title policy.
Anyone else in the audience?
My name is Keith.
Keith, how you doing? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
My name is Keith, I live in Dearborn Heights. I live on Party Avenue. I was, remember reading an article several months ago, and I don't want to butcher up your name, Mr. Chairman, about water bills, excessive water bills. And I was wondering if there was anything that has been done or investigated on that.
We are just in the very early stages, but I can tell you right now that this is something that's not going to happen overnight or within the first month or two. It's something that's going to take up, it's going to be a process.
I understand because I was reviewing some of my past water bills and I was noticing, and that's almost a pattern, that there are some bills, they were two months between readings, some a little over two months, some three months, some a little over three months in readings, is.
And I think that just goes back to being short-staffed, you know, or being able to do the work that they could do. I don't think that's intentional or that's the reason why, but I mean, I can also see that if you're a month, you're a month, you know, three-month reading, you know, it's going to be a lot more, you know.
Right, right, yeah, and it's, I understand that, but I, because my current, my water bill that I just paid today, I paid it reluctantly. I'm going to tell you that right now. Because I'm living in my house by myself.
I knocked on your door.
And it was well over $200 by myself. No, my sinks are dry in the morning, so I don't have running faucets. Because I also read that in the article, that somebody says, oh, your toilets are running. No, my toilets aren't running. No, my faucets are dripping. I live in the house by myself now. At night, when it's quiet, there's no running toilets, no dripping water. And I was just wondering if, I mean, it is being investigated still, correct?
Yeah, it is.
All right, I appreciate that. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add something to that. Not only are we being charged a lot from Detroit for your water, you do have the problem of sometimes it's more than a two-month bill. But a lot of the residents don't know, we voted on something back in 2021, uh, for a bond issue that is included in our water bill. So I've gotta find out more details on, on that, but that's another fee that's in there that isn't mentioned on your bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, how can you be collecting a fee if you're not being transparent on, on what it's for?
Well, they probably did it when you voted on it, and it goes for our CSO project, I think it was 41. So that's the separation of the sewer and the water usage.
Okay, right.
So that's part of the problem that's not understood at this time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. God bless you, sir. Anyone else in the audience, or on Zoom? Yeah, just want to hear in the audience first.
Dropkowski, Columbia Street.
Then it's go green, go white.
Hey, way to go, Mo. I find it ironic that our mayor's never here when the audience is full of residents to answer questions. Where is he?
I don't know.
He knows what time the meetings are, right? I mean, is he gonna show up?
Oh, no, he wasn't.
Once in a while? Is he hiding at the police station? Is he, or is he at the coffee house? Um, yeah, celebrating his birthday, what? You know, at least Mayor Dan Pallico had the guts to sit here and take the beatings from the audience, or the residents, when they had complaints. This guy, hiding behind somebody's skirt. Start showing up at your meetings, Mr. Bazey. Got it? Or get out.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience, or anyone else in Zoom? May be a man, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Rachel Laplante, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I was gonna maybe go after some of the people on Zoom, but that's okay. Um, I'll let them handle their stuff. Uh, Thursday, I'm kinda jumping a gun on an announcement a little bit. There's a meeting regarding the creek. Um, I would like to let everyone know, um, it's gonna be held at the Richard A. Young Center Thursday night. However, on that same evening, at Richard A. Young is cheerleading at the same time, so the parking lot is going to be full. Also, at the same exact time, is parent-teacher conferences for OW Best. I would like to invite all the parents to come to parent-teacher conferences, and I would like to request that the city record this meeting and schedule a second one, because every parent who is now having to choose between getting information about the creek, or talking to their teacher, their kid's teachers, has to make a tough decision, especially if they live on the creek. I'd also like to bring up that I drove past some of the areas where they have already started removing trees and vegetation. The entire South End will be decimated. The creek area, the way the county is going about this, they are just stripping the land. There is nothing but mud and the creek left when they're done with it. I'm horribly, horribly disappointed that this is what the county is deciding to do with the $10 million. That they told us was gonna, you know, help clean up the creek, they're destroying it. They're gonna destroy home values in the South End. That's like, it's a beautiful natural resource, and they're gonna destroy it. So hopefully, the meeting on Thursday, maybe you guys have some of a plan. I'd love to be there. I've got two kids in middle school, probably can't be in two places at once. You guys can do something about all the issues with the permits. You have a fiscal responsibility to make sure that the income we generate, which includes building permits, is what we are planning on it being. If it's under because people aren't coming to get permits, that falls on you guys. So you, whatever you have to do to go and, and try and encourage the administration to do their jobs, please do it, because it does come down to you at the end of the day. Um, and on that same note, you can tell the mayor to follow the law. Right now, I question if there's a vacancy in office. His first duty is to enforce the laws and ordinances of this city. He does not do that. The charter says that a vacancy in office exists if an elected official hasn't fulfilled their duties for sixty or ninety days. We all know it's been longer than sixty or ninety days, that he hasn't been enforcing the laws and ordinances of this city, willfully, willfully choosing to not follow them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Chair. Just very briefly, I, um, went down to Lincoln Park and saw what they're doing, and Ms. Laplante is right, they're clearing almost to make like a road along the side of the creek, but there are bushes, there are trees, and, and all that's gonna happen, I think, is just more erosion.
Yeah, it'll destroy the, it'll destroy the ecosystem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, I'm gonna go off with, I saw Mr. Parrish raise his hand first, then we'll go with Barb, and then we'll go with Ms. Kaminsky, Beth, and then Resident. So let's start with Dana Parrish, since I saw, not that I'm favoring him, I just wanted to keep it clear. Maybe I am. I don't know, I'm just kidding. But no, I saw him put his hand up. So usually I'd say ladies first, but he did put his hand up first.
Good evening, Dana Parrish, Franklin Park Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, a couple of issues, Angela already hit on 11B. Don't vote on that one, don't vote positively. I just went over a ton of things in there that are missing. Uh, the ordinance department isn't listed under there for inspections. Uh, the way revocation is just horrible. You got three separate days, three separate incidents.
She's smiling really big with you right now, Dana.
What's that?
She's smiling really big.
Yeah, there's, there's, I mean, if they do a drug bust or domestic violence there, I mean, it's just too many holes in the, in the whole thing. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, we had a big, uh, 12-inch main break on Annapolis Monroe recently. Um, I talked to the council chair about this. Um, we're complaining about water. Um, I did some calculations. If it took a total of eight hours from the time the water department was notified, that doesn't mean it's when it happened, from when they were notified till they got there, or the police department got there, then they notified water department, water department got there, they called Ms. Dig, because Ms. Dig has to come out there to make sure before they dig anything up. They verify there's nothing there, then they dig the hole in the ground, and they fix it. Let's just, let's just assume it's eight hours. Eight hours at 4,700 gallons per minute is what a 12-inch main leaks. Sixty minutes in an hour, that's 282,000 gallons per hour. Eight hours, that's 2,256,000 gallons for that water main break alone, just for one. And our, our water is about 19 cents a gallon currently, and that's with using our formula of, uh, one unit of water costs $14.27. And there's 748 gallons and one gallon, or one unit of, of, uh, water in the city. Uh, we use eight-inch mains primarily in the city of Dearborn Heights. Using the same calculations I told you about, just assuming eight hours, and this is a very, very conservative number, that's, uh, 768,000 gallons per average main break, and that's $14,592 for every single main break the city has. I think some of the folks here need to understand that we're coming up on main break season, and we're not talking one or two main breaks. Our infrastructure is 61 years old, and you need to ask somebody from DPW, or excuse me, the water department, and find out the number of water main breaks we had last year, and then multiply that out just for the cost of water. Not our employees' time, or the equipment to fix it, just the water. And everybody's wondering why our water rates are through, are through the roof. There's one reason, because who pays for that water? All of us pay for that water, because it gets distributed every year. So we're gonna have this problem until we fix our infrastructure.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd be the same damn reason everybody else does. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Dana, I do wanna just say, I know you and I had this conversation quickly, guys, just to respond. Uh, I agree, that is, that is, could be one of the many reasons why we have many, we have higher water rates. It still does not justify why there are some that are five and six and $7,000.
I agree.
You know, or, or, or how much?
Fourteen.
Or $14,000. A guy came here and said he had a $14,000 water bill. I, I don't have that answer. The administration has not given us an answer.
Counselor Chair, I'll also throw in there, I agree with what you're saying. My house was built in 2001, right?
Yeah.
My meter is about 60 years old.
Yeah.
There you go. There's part of the reason. We got $25 million in the last administration to fix this mess. Of course, it sat around till after COVID, the prices for everything did what? Skyrocketed. So now that bond money is worth what? Nothing, almost, because all the prices went through the roof. So now we still don't have meters, as you and many other council members have said. So now we got these antiquated water meters that are giving these crappy results.
I, I agree with you, Dana. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. That's, that's also something else that we have to look at as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair, if I may, um, in response to what you said about, I, I wanna let the council know that we did follow with that individual with the $14,000 bill. It had, actually was a mistake with 6,000, which was removed, but also the properties actually being, two houses are being built on that property, and we went over the meter and the size of the diameter was actually a commercial, and that would explain why the water bills are high. It's a two-inch centimeter rather than a 5/8ths as regular properties. But we did meet with them, following up with your request for me to do-
Thank you. Good job, Roger. Thank you. So we're from 14,000, we subtracted 6,000?
6,000, the, there actually just two properties inside that one facility, and it has a commercial size, um, holes and stuff, and two water heaters in there.
Okay, thank you. $8,000. Sounds all right. Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, we have Barb Runners.
Do you ask for extra minute?
And you asked for an extra minute. Go ahead, please state, state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Joe Ring, Detroit Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I also want to, uh, touch on the agenda, item 11B. And much like Angela, I have one next to me. Needless to say how unhappy I have been for 17 years of dealing with plumbers. I've been a resident in this city for 63 years, and I've seen it go down the toilet. This new ordinance, bull. It doesn't need to pass. We already have an existing ordinance that does not permit them. With that in mind, unless you want one next to you, I would suggest voting no. You don't know if they're cooking, you know, in there cooking meth. I don't know if the house is gonna blow up. Do we have illegal trafficking? We know we've had a park between the houses dumping music and smoking crack at 3:00 in the morning. This is a constant problem. And this is something that I say, do not pass this new ordinance, which will allow them. If you think you have problems complaining about them now, you don't think it's gonna get worse? Because things are gonna turn ugly around people who have to deal with this on a daily basis. At minimum, with this new ordinance, if it was followed correctly, I would still get 91 new neighbors a year. Does anybody around here wanna go through that? At minimum, 91 new neighbors a year. Anybody show their hand who wants it? No. Nobody wants it, neither do we. So I'd appreciate your consideration for the thought of the residents, which is why this first ordinance was ever put in place, which would be for the community, their health and safety. And to pass this ordinance says you don't care about the residents, and you can't quite have a magic wand to put a commercial property next to me in a residential neighborhood. It's ridiculous to even write a second ordinance. If you need fine schedules, I've got my own I wrote out, if anybody would care to hear them. Here you go. For the existing ones now, they get a 30-day notice from the city. Every rental house, so nobody can say they didn't receive it. You got 30 days to cease and desist, or the first offense is $5,000, second offense is $15,000, and a third offense for forfeiture of the home. We gotta make it non-profitable if we want this problem to stop. And I'm telling you, after 17 years of dealing with BS, I'm ready. And I think I'm not the only one, and I believe that Angela and I are probably the only ones complaining but the tip of the iceberg.
She's, she's smiling from ear to ear here for you, Joe.
By the way, she should, because I am stressed, and the last thing I need is high blood pressure with my medical problems. And I shouldn't have to deal with this on a daily basis. I'm retired, I thought this would be my golden years, I thought I would become a bullshit. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else? Thank you, Barb. Thank you, Joe. God bless you guys. Thank you all that you guys do for this. Also, Barb, guys, also helped out with Lynn since September with the clerk's office. So round of applause to her for going above and beyond and really providing for the city of Dearborn Heights. Barb, we're so proud of you guys. Next up, we have everybody's favorite, Sue Kaminsky.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Sue Kaminsky, Amway Street, Dearborn Heights. I stand with the police department, I stand with our officers. F-78 was promised by administration to be followed for all future directors if we accepted the two that were hired without F-78, which was administration's play of skirting it through of a contract. It's absolute BS. The mayor is intentionally skirting the law, and I believe we need to do another recall, because this is proof that he does not wanna follow the previous contracts that he's made, or the law. And I've had it. I want our police force to be full the way it used to be. We don't even have hardly any senior officers. We had an incident about a gentleman, um, recently, and there is a history, and our new police officers, no fault of their own, don't even know the history of it. It's sad to live in a community that our mayor doesn't care enough to come to meetings or to show what that works. If he wants to go to Washington, DC, go now. Good riddance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, Sue, next up, we have everybody's second favorite, Mary Beth. Our first favorite.
Hi, Mary Beth Balthowski, District 7, School Board, Dearborn Heights. I live on Dudley Street. I'm speaking as both a community member and as, um, the board secretary. On September 18th of 2024, at the Dearborn Heights regular board meeting, um, we had a parent who was upset, um, rightly so, and as that parent was exiting the cafeteria at the middle school, um, they threw a chair that was in their way aside. That parent has since apologized, at the very next meeting apologized for their behavior, uh, took full responsibility. Um, at the October 2nd meeting, there was request for a Dearborn Heights police officer to be present at that, um, meeting. I abstained from that meeting. I abstained for reasons being that, um, it is my belief that, um, police officers are not properly trained, um, in handling emotionally wrought situations. Um, there is proof in the fact that, um, in the last four years alone, over 1,100 people of color have died at the hands of police. Um, Elijah McLean was a, um, human being who had autism spectrum disorder, and he was injected with a lethal dose of ketamine because police officers did not recognize that he was having a panic attack during them pulling him aside for simply walking down the street. Um, Tamira Rice was 12 years old. These are just a couple of examples. Um, at the October 16th meeting, I spoke, um, out against having a police officer present at the meeting. Um, afterwards, um, the police officer came at me, um, to let me know that I was disrespectful, and that I was a liar, and that all of the facts that I had given were in fact lies. Um, I abstained from this last meeting because of that. She became emotional herself, that officer. Um, we are paying officers overtime. We are short-staffed, and we're gonna have a police officer come to a school board meeting for three people. It is ridiculous. I wish that the police department will look into this and, um, put the officers on the street where they're needed, not at school board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary Beth. God bless you, and thank you for your services. Next up, we have Resident. Resident, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Good Citizen, and I work at a business near Telegraph and Ford Road. I have a few concerns. Uh, the first concern-
Hang on, hang on, hang on. You're, you're identifying as Good Citizen, and you live, where do you live?
I live on Highland Street.
Okay, and in the city of Dearborn Heights?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, Good Citizen. Please continue.
Thank you all for doing a great job. I appreciate you guys holding the administration to the fire. It seems like a lot of things going on in Dearborn Heights aren't normal. Um, number one, the mayor should be at these hearings, at these council meetings. I think it's very pertinent that the mayor is at these hearings to hear the residents' concerns. My, uh, my second concern is with the short-term rental Airbnb ordinance. I think, I think if you want one next to your house, you should vote yes. If you don't want one, you should definitely vote no. My final concern, I don't wanna take up anybody's time, is the panhandling. I know there's not much we can do about the panhandling, especially in the corner of Telegraph and Ford Road, but what we can do is enforce the loitering laws, um, for the people hanging around the businesses after hours. I think i- it's a nuisance. I've, I've personally seen people, you know, sell and engage in criminal activity because of this stuff, and it would be useful if, if our police force can, can do that. I know they're understaffed, and, and the last thing I wanna add, I know I said that was the last thing, maybe we can get more routine patrol to slow down the NASCAR drivers on Ford Road, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Good Citizen. Counselor Chair?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, especially at Ford and Telegraph, and the, one gentleman has a sign up as if he's collecting for a cause, but he's not, and I've called and complained about it many, many times. Thank you for mentioning your concern.
All right, guys. Uh, with, with that being said, is there anybody else on Zoom, or anybody else in person that'd like to give any, uh, final words here? If not, we're gonna be closing out the public comments and, uh, seeing none. Let's move over to fund transfers and current claims.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claim in CH, uh, ACH wire transfer 6-1 through 6-55 as submitted.
Support motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by-
Counsel.
Uh, Councilman Coniston. Any comments?
Counselor Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remove item 22, please.
22 IB electric. Um, you know, Councilman Sob, just for the future, just to kinda make things easier on us, you could have read the motion with saying with the eliminating 22, so that we don't have to go back to the discussion and back and forth.
You gotta open it up for discussion first, after it's-
Well, if you would have just amended this by saying, I wanna do this with eliminating 2022.
No. You gotta read the motion.
No, you don't.
And then open it up for discussion to amend it.
Okay. You can amend it in the beginning, is what I'm saying.
Okay. You can amend it in the beginning, is what I'm saying.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Council chair.
Councilman Constant.
I'm all set.
Okay, Councilman Sob, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, to remove item twenty-two.
Okay. So, Councilman Constant, would you second that?
Well, I, you know, we've got some conclusion on this. I don't know what information is needed, copies of contracts, but the gentleman did the work. That's my only comment, but I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. And you know, I agree with you. He did do the work. However, Councilman Sob made a good point last week when he said, like, you know, this has happened to us one too many times. Or like, where the administration spends the money the way it wants, and the council has no say in it. So we can, you know, we can be sitting ducks here and just basically give up this position and hand this gavel over to somebody and say, "Don't worry about it, we're no longer needed," or we're gonna say that our jobs are needed. So, I mean, that's kinda where I stand, and it becomes frustrating that it's happened one, two, three, four, five different times, positions, pays, like, like, when are we gonna start saying, holding accountability, feet to the ground? Uh, so motion made by Councilman Sob to remove twenty-two IB electric, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any other discussion?
Council chair.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you said it right, we have to be fair across all city departments. I mean, enough is enough. Anybody that needs to spend money has to come to this body for approval before doing the work.
That's it?
That's it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let's get that one back again. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion. Okay. Madam clerk, please take roll call. Okay, guys, nothing from the audience, please.
Hassan Sab.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Nancy Breier.
No.
Robert Constant.
Yes.
And Moby Doom.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have consideration of bids, none, reports from the mayor, ARPA premium pay authorization.
Council chair.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the payment of two thousand five hundred American Rescue Plan Act premium pay to all full-time employees hired prior to June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, to be paid from ARPA funds as outlined in eight A.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion?
Council chair, did we, I don't think we got any documentation about this. Is this something we? I mean-
I know that council body has requested it.
Correct, but was it twenty-five hundred?
I don't know.
I don't know, but-
Yeah, this was Councilman Wenzel's resolution. This should've said this was being done by Councilman Wenzel, not the mayor. The mayor actually opposed this and never gave it to them last year. But I had a lot of questions on this. Do we have a figure? Because that's what he said he was gonna come up with. Also, secondly, will people like the former HR and the former police chief and all these other former people that worked from twenty-twenty-two, President Dayby also getting this money? Does that mean Mr. Blackburn, who was also released, also gonna get this money? I mean, it was very vague and not descriptive enough for us, and-
I wish we had some backup, council chair.
There was no backup on this, and if you know one thing about this council, we're all about giving our full-time and part-time employees some money. Because if you wanna give twenty-five hundred, I think the fair thing should be two thousand five hundred to part-time employees. But a discussion or any backup was not given to this body.
And the city was closed yesterday.
Okay, I will take that into consideration, and again, we can make any changes that you wish to do so. Yes, Mr. Wenzel and the council body had approved the reservation of ARPA funds for this purpose, but we had never agreed on a specific amount for it. So right now, we're recommending this amount based on what other cities have provided for their employees. Typically, part-time employees did not receive that money. At the time, it was considered that this would go to the employees that are currently staffed. If you want to make any amendments to that, we can take that into consideration.
Why don't we table this, you give us a breakdown of what it is, you know, and if, listen, this is all-
If you want us to add more people, could you give us guidance now? Because I was, we were just considering current-
And the part-time employees.
Full-time employees.
I believe it was twenty-five hundred dollars, believe, it was twenty-five hundred from Councilman Wenzel's resolution. So if you go back and you look at his second or third, he made an adjustment to it, it was twenty-five hundred.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so let's also honor this to be on Councilman Wenzel's name, because initially, this was his resolution.
I just recall the, like, a certain amount that was served, but I don't remember the two thousand five-
Doing this a year later and bringing this up, that's great.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
Sorry, I just need a formal resolution with council approval for-
Just give us a breakdown. How many employees? Give us the list of who's getting what, you know?
Okay.
And are anybody from the past gonna get it?
And you want part-time included? No, again, we were not included, any employees that are not currently employed.
Was employed from January of twenty-twenty-two to, you know, twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four is from what I read.
So then we would need a specific period that you want to consider? Would you like, like, the beginning of COVID until June, employees to be included?
No, it should be anybody that's employed right now, currently by the city administration or the city.
But the ones that have already left, so you're asking to add an additional, I'm just looking for a timeframe.
Yeah, you know what, I would say if it's anybody they were adding, it would be considered, I think our police and fire would be the only additional ones that we'd be giving to. So if they retired or if they've left with good faith, I think that those police fires and firefighters should also receive it. But if it's like, you know, we had three different, or four different controllers. I don't see why the controllers need to get it.
That's why we were only considering currently employed. But again, if you want a specific area, maybe you can identify that so that we can give you the correct information.
Yeah, police and fire.
Police and fire employees that were employed from the beginning of COVID until the end of COVID.
Correct. Or any union employees for that matter.
Yeah, all the union employees are, oh, that have left, so, okay, so now you're expanding it to all union. Okay, I can do that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Get us the figure, let us see what it breaks down. I mean, everybody's getting it regardless here. We're saying, but if anybody left, allow that the union employees who left to continue to also receive it.
Okay, for all unions.
If they were working here during COVID, yes.
Okay.
So can we have two figures, all the people that worked through COVID and whoever is working right now who worked through COVID?
Yeah.
Sure.
This way, we'll know exactly where-
And let us, or you can even categorize it, and let us break down, because I feel like also, our part-time employees worked here during COVID. So for us to, like, say that, you know, you're part-time, and so I'm not gonna accept you, like, to me, I find that to be, like-
So should I also include part-time employees?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. Our part-time employees are employees of the city, they're family to the city.
We'll do that.
Thank you. So I would ask Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell if you'd like to table this. Would you like to, you wanna go ahead and make that?
Refer it back.
Okay.
Back to the administration?
One second.
Just say I want to refer.
I know. I move that we refer eight-a back to the administration to be corrected.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Chief of Staff. Thank you, motion made by Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Sob to refer back AA to the administration. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have reports from city officials. Treasurer explained purchase and payment using American Express points for dry erase wall calendar.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of a dry erase wall calendar for the treasurer's office using American Express points at a value of one hundred eighty-nine dollars ninety-nine cents, plus shipping and handling as outlined in nine-a.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you for our treasurer for bringing up a new dry erase calendar. Uh, next up, we have IT Director Cooper, cloud volume P service agreement.
Council chair.
I don't know who said that.
Council chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the cloud V O I P service agreement between the city and OMA Inc. for the monthly cost of nine hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-four cents plus monthly tax and surcharges as authorized by the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement documents on behalf of the city, which will expire thirty-six months after the service installation is complete. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account number one oh one two five eight eight five three zero zero one as outlined in nine-b.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have IT Director Cooper, intro radio S I P admin installation.
Council chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of an S I P admin from Introtto for a cost not to exceed eleven thousand seven hundred eight dollars and eighty-six cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller clerk to sign the necessary documents and the treasurer to issue payment from account two six five three three zero eight three one two six five as outlined in nine-C.
Support. Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on this?
How do you say it, David? Introtto, how is it?
Introtto. Yeah, I was like, just call it, I'm just gonna call it radio. All right, well, then we got the wording fixed. I'm sure we don't know how to use it either, but we'll leave that to our IT director. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have IT Director Cooper, Equator Software and Hardware Refresh Agreement.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the software and hardware refresh agreement between the city and Aquature for a first-year cost not to exceed thirteen thousand twenty-six dollars twenty-eight cents, and then eleven thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-eight cents per year for the next four years. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account two six five three three zero eight three one dot two six five as outlined in nine-d.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion?
Uh, council chair.
Yeah.
Director Cooper, can we have a report next time just to see how much you're spending so far versus the budget that you have? Just to make sure we're still-
I don't think it's something you need to-
I don't think you have it right now. You wanna say something? You wanna reach out to the comptroller yourself? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, Police Chief, yep, thank you, everybody's favorite Police Chief Swope, Salbright Contract Renewal.
Council chair.
Councilman Sob, who's your favorite councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the renewal of Salbright service contract between the city and Salbright Inc. for a total of six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, which will expire November seventeen, twenty twenty-five. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign the necessary warrants and treasurer's office to issue payment from forfeiture account two six five three three zero eight three one two six five as outlined in nine-E.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breier. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. I know we're not supposed to have any discussion because we already voted on it, but I read up on this and I saw that basically what the Salbright is, is we need to hack into somebody's phone or figures things out. This is what we're paying Salbright, where we're just renewing the contract with. I kinda went a little bit to the details. It's pretty unique in what it does, so if you had a chance to read it, it's pretty cool. Next up, we have nine-F Planning Commission recommendation rezoning of five-six-five-three, five-six-seven-five Kingsbury from R-one to R-M.
Council chair.
Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and deny the rezoning request for five-six-five-three Kingsbury and five-six-seven-five Kingsbury as outlined in nine-F.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that? Just for full disclosure, this is a recommendation to deny from R-one to R-M. The council is now going to either make the decision to either agree and follow the recommendation of the planning commission, or you guys can vote the opposite direction. For my, I can tell you I'm gonna stand in favor with their, you know, understands. I went to that planning commission meeting, if you were here, you would see the gentleman wants to build on these two lots, an apartment building in the middle of the residential neighborhood. Residents definitely opposed it, kinda like what's going on with Angela and, I believe, Barb spoke. Nobody wants to see any commercials amongst their residents. When they bought here, they bought in a residential neighborhood. Nobody bought their home saying, "I'm gonna be living next door to a business." And so I really appreciate the planning commission for voting on this and denying this. Any other discussion? Awesome. All right, I hear my voice, thanks. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have ordinance and resolution, Mayor Bazee Warren Valley Golf Course liquor license resolution, twenty twenty-four.
Council chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the city, I make a recommended motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the Warren Valley Warren Valley Golf Course liquor license resolution and that the following be resolved. One, Mayor Bill Bazee is hereby appointed as an authorized signator for all documents related to the appointment of Revive Golf Management LLC as a co-licency on the Michigan liquor license for the Warren Valley Golf Course. Two, Chief of Staff Mariana Handez-
Hernandez.
Hernandez is hereby appointed as an authorized signator for the documents related to the appointment of the Revive Golf Management LLC as a co-licency on the Michigan liquor license with the Warren Valley Golf Course. Be further resolved that the city clerk is instructed to notify the Michigan Liquor Control Commission of these appointments as required by law. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage as outlined in eleven-A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Madam clerk, I just wanna clarify, further be that the city clerk is instructed to notify the Michigan Liquor Council Commission. Are you okay with that? Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I know how busy you tend to be. And I think this is something that's well overdue. I think Revive has been revage or revive, I don't know if I'm saying it right. You know, Jason, my good friend, Jason Priscilla, who I've been a member of his golf course here in Dearborn Heights now for two years, I could say he has churned this golf course around, honest to God. He deserves a huge round of applause. I know this was a missing piece, but let me tell you guys, for somebody who sucks at golf but still tries, I can tell you, I've tried, I've probably dug up a bunch of things inside those greens, but the thing looks so good compared to what it looks like. Even our carts, having, he's just added those things where it shows you where you hit the ball and how far you are from the hole. And if you ask Councilman Ahmad, the last time he went out, he had a concussion, I don't know what happened, but- He's not an operator. But really, Jason, you and your team have done a phenomenal job. You guys have made that place look amazing, and I know in the next ten years, it's only gonna get better. I know if you guys drive by right now, you'll see that he's putting in addition of a golf range, which is gonna be open to be able, a lot of people would take lessons, can be, you know, you think he's gonna be free. I think you said to our seniors that live reside in Dearborn Heights, I think seniors can go golf, nine holes for like nine bucks or a dollar or something. Free before nine AM, they're probably already awake at five and they're ready to go. But, yeah, I can't wait till I get it for free. But really, you're doing a phenomenal job, Jason, honest to God. You know, we thank you. You came here before us two years ago, and you said, "I have a vision, and this is what my expectations are, and this is what I'm gonna do." And you really stuck to that. And Dearborn Heights owes you, you know, at least I can tell you, I doubted you at one point, so I apologize, but congratulations to you and your team, man, once again. I hope this passes tonight. Any other discussion? Well, great, hearing not, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, congratulations, Jasons, on your future liquor license at the Warren Valley Golf Course. Next up is eleven-B, first reading, proposed ordinance for H-dash-twenty-four-dash-zero-three, short-term rental ordinance.
Council chair.
Councilman Sob.
With the Dearborn Heights City Council move that proposed ordinance, H-dash-twenty-four-dash-o-three, short-term rental ordinance be considered, read for the first time as outlined in eleven-B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that?
Council chair.
Council chair, councilman.
You read the motion. Go ahead. You read the motion, go ahead. Okay, thank you, Council chair. It's definitely this motion, it's a double-edged sword for me. I swore an oath to support, advocate for homeownership rights, but is this the right thing for Dearborn Heights? I would say no. Is it for a different city property up north? I would say yes. Do I have the right to say, "No, you cannot rent your property"? Probably I would say, "No, you do have the right to rent your property." But can we, as a city, put more restriction? Definitely, yes. Would I vote for this one? No. I would like to see way more restriction that probably people don't wanna, you know, have short-term rentals in Dearborn Heights. But as an advocate for- have short-term rentals in, uh, Dearborn Heights, but as an advocate for homeowners' right to enjoy, to rent, to sell, I cannot just say, no, you can't do that. But I can put restriction, definitely on it. But probably I would like to see way more restriction, restrictions on this, um, uh, before we can do anything about it. Uh, I guess Councilor is not here?
Okay.
Councilor Porton.
Yeah, please go ahead, Councilor.
So, I was here at this reading for, in front of the Planning Commission regarding this, and yes, we have rental properties in the city. We can't even keep up with them. The problem is you got drug dealers using these homes as a temporary hot place to sell drugs, prostitution, in our own neighborhoods. Although I agree you have the right to ownership, but we also have the right to, uh, have a safe neighborhood and our kids be able to play outside and not have parties and whatever's going on. I'm, I, I actually read this thing. This ordinance is ridiculous. It's a joke. It goes as far as that you can't.
Point of vote, please.
It goes as far as that you can't flush toilet paper down the drain. We can't even get, just like I think a resident said, that we can't even get police officers to ticket cars on garbage day. And I mean, getting, uh, passing this would only put a strain on city services, law enforcement and fire that. If the neighbors have to complain of a party, of something illegal going on, it's taking the resources off the street to dedicate them to this. Uh, we're not, we're okay with having, we have plenty of rentals in the city, and I'm not against them. But short-term rentals, not, we're not a destination city. We're a small neighborhood, uh, community that, um, that, you know, everybody knows everybody in the city, and for, for anybody to say otherwise is just fault. I mean, I, I read up on Airbnb, I've, 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 I've stayed in Airbnb before, but, I mean, to be honest with you, as much as restrictions you put on it, uh, the city does not have the manpower or anything to enforce anything. So you'd be lying to yourself and lying to the residents. And, um, honestly, I'm completely opposed of having Airbnbs in our city, period. Short-term rentals, period, in our city.
Councilor.
Councilor. Councilman?
Uh, yes, but I just had one, I'm sorry, one last thing. This actually, the day at the Planning Commission, um, the outcry that came from residents on this, I think, uh, Councilor and I were here, or it was, uh, for both, it was for this and the motion that, uh, we approved, uh, for that apartment building. Residents aren't happy about it. Like residents would say, if you support it and you want drug dealers temporary staying in the weekend in your house and having parties until two o'clock next door to you, honestly, I, I, it's not something I want in my neighborhood. We have schools around every single, every other block, you know, every couple of blocks in our neighborhood. We don't want this around our neighborhoods. But I, I support the residents and what the residents say. Thank you.
Councilor Porton? Can I speak?
Yeah, please.
Sorry. Go ahead, please, ladies first, absolutely. Forgive us, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, and it's, it's true, I have used Airbnbs myself as a vacation destination. Dearborn Heights is not a vacation destination. It seems to be a party destination for neighboring cities lately. Um, no one saw Airbnb being used like this, like it has been in Dearborn Heights. That was not what it was meant to do. Um, I guess it's, you have a lot of people doing this because there's no manager on site to control the situation like a hotel. In a hotel, if people did half the things they did at these Airbnbs, they would have been asked to leave. And even though our police department responds, they could respond several times, because I don't, I think the people know, they don't get kicked out. I mean, and we have no control. I, I actually have one resident that was in touch with the owner. Owner did nothing, didn't care. They were getting their money. That's all they wanted. They don't care what the neighbors around their home, what's, what they're going through.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. I'm just gonna go ahead and echo some of, uh, the council members here. Uh, I don't also think that, like, Rogers do this intentionally to say, guys, look, we need to have this. I don't think that was his intention. I think Rogers said, you know, he heard from residents saying, we need some type of ordinance, he put this before us, um, you know, people spoke up, yeah, the Planning Commission stole for some odd reason, passed it, but I can tell you, this is, you know, where it stands before the city council, and I'm gonna tell you right now, we don't want this, Roger. And I think the only ordinance we need to have on H dash twenty-four dash zero three is ensuring that nobody is allowed to open up Airbnbs in Dearborn Heights. Look, we're a bedroom community, uh, you know, you got kids walking on Wilson to go into Kenlock, you got kids walking on Annapolis to going to Polk and, and, and all the other schools. I want to make something very clear to you. We do not want to see beer bottles in front of people's homes, people standing and jumping off the roof and landing into the pool, happening outside of Angela's home. We don't want that. I can tell you, my next-door neighbor who sold the house behind me, it's not my next-door neighbor, but, you know, directly to, behind my home, Ellen said, you know, my son wants to Airbnb it, and I said, absolutely not. We are not gonna Airbnb this. I don't want my kids waking up, we don't want my, you know, my dog, not to say she's the best dog in the world, but anything that walks by, she's barking everywhere. We'll be sleeping and you have these neighbors next door, you know, they're, they're walking out late at night, the dogs barking, the family's waking up, it's just not necessary. Let's stay a bedroom community. That's, Roger, so maybe we can give you the recommendation of saying, put something before us. And look, if we're gonna get sued by the state because it's, you know, it's approved by the state, so be it, sue us. I don't know how many people are gonna wanna say, I wanna come and live in Dearborn Heights as an Airbnb. Sue us.
There's nothing said by the state.
May I comment, Councilor?
Yeah.
Um, first of all, this is not a promulgation of Airbnbs. What this is, is a regulation of existing Airbnbs. There are three hundred and four ABMBs in the city already, but we have no way of regulating them, as you, as Council, uh, Council, uh.
Ahmad.
Men, um, uh, sorry, put in, she said that how, there's no control.
Absolutely right.
Um, uh, no, no control, there is no control. And, and when, it went before Planning Commission, I disagreed with it, only, I mean, Angela did speak up, and they said, okay, where are there other issues where police could be called, nuisance actions could be called? If there's prostitution and drug sales, obviously law enforcement could step forward. However, one councilwoman pointed out and said, look, we're eight minutes from the airport. We have a number of the top leading children's hospitals in the area. People use these Airbnbs to stay for a longer period of time so their kids can get help, and they brought out that that's an excellent use of the Airbnbs. I'm not saying put more Airbnbs in the city of Dearborn Heights, but we have already existing Airbnbs, three hundred and four. And if we don't regulate them, yes, absolutely, if there's drug activity, criminal activity, the ordinance covers that. If they're not, the, the size, the space, the in, the influence of the building department, making sure the permits are there, absolutely, the insurance is there to cover the city if someone's injured, that's what the ordinance is designed to do, to protect, not to promulgate. So if we look at the ordinance, like you said, and, and Councilman Ahmed said, um, he says, look, I, I, you know, people have rights, but I want to make sure that it, it, it's curtailed or it's protect, it's protecting the citizens. That's what the ordinance is designed to do. However, if you don't want to just give us back the feedback, what would be acceptable? We're not saying use this to open up more short-term rentals. We're not saying use this to promulgate more. We are saying we need regulation. I heard it from council that we had a number of problems and things like that, that's why this is put forward.
All we're saying is, I think, I think all the council's saying, and maybe we can refer this back to you, Roger.
Yeah.
So we don't go back. We want it to be extremely strict, and we want to make it to, basically, it's impossible to get an Airbnb in Dearborn Heights.
Can't say that, because of rights. However, we, we have a lot, I will go over and redo it for you. The Planning Commission went thoroughly through it, uh, Mr. DeWitt went through it, the Buildings Department went through it.
Roger, honestly, Roger, to be honest with you, it, I don't want to be rude or, it's terrible. It's absolutely terrible.
As I said, um, the Planning Commission reviewed this and approved it. So if you think it's terrible, please let me know how it's terrible, that helps.
I will send you.
And I respect you and I trust your judgment.
Councilor.
Trust Mr. Saab.
I'm gonna hear from Councilman Saab and then Councilman Ahmad, and we're gonna go ahead and take a vote on this. There's nothing from the audience, I'm sorry.
Councilor.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I, I, and, and no insult to everyone, to anybody, this, this, this ordinance is horrible, and honestly, I'd like to put an ordinance forward to enforce the three hundred and four properties to crack down on them, because we don't have such ordinance to have Airbnbs. And like you, like, like we said, I think we have, we're behind how many years on each rental for inspections? We had to just hire an ordinance officer to do inspections on rentals. Yeah, we have three hundred and four additional Airbnbs in the city. Who's maintaining them? The mayor's office? I mean, and none of the day, the residents.
That, that's why we have an ordinance.
But the, but, but the ordinance that you got, the, the administration's going through is not being enforced. That's, I'm not saying this one.
Well, it's not an ordinance yet to be enforced.
No, no. Council, uh, uh, Councilor.
Give me that, Angela.
I'd, uh, I'd honestly.
Hand it to the clerk, please.
I would like to actually put a motion to enforce.
Let me, I, I want you to read it, whatever is being sent. What is this, by the way?
It's the City of Dearborn Heights Short Term Rental Ordinance, the City of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan, section oh-one, oh-one, purpose. Prior to the adoption of this ordinance, short-term rentals of single-family dwellings were not permitted anywhere within the city of Dearborn Heights. Short-term rental of single-family dwellings within the city of Dearborn Heights is a matter closely connected with the public health, safety and welfare of the community. This ordinance is an attempt to allow the commercial activity of short-term rentals of single-family dwellings in a limited manner in the city of Dearborn Heights, while protecting the interest of our residents.
We already have an ordinance.
I don't think this is. You haven't seen it, the Planning Commission didn't see it. I don't know what she's reading from, because that has not been given, that has not been turned over to me.
Hey, guys, guys, Roger, hold on, point of order. But it's not inclusive. Roger, please, point of order, point of order. I'm, I'm gonna let you speak, just hang on. Madam Clerk, is this on?
This is the ordinance, it's page, um, it's on the agenda, it's one ninety-five, on the backup, it's page one ninety-five of two sixty-two. So it's what was submitted.
Okay.
The ordinance that was submitted.
I think that's a mistake, Councilor. We don't even have an ordinance right now to say yes or no, so whatever they did that the Planning Commission is wrong, so they should have did their homework better.
That does not say the Planning Commission is wrong, Councilor, with all due permission.
Okay, Planning Commission is infallible.
It defines what short-term rentals is, because four days, two weeks, three weeks does not define it, and how, it doesn't cover any, uh, any other issues in that. If someone rents their house for temporarily an elderly person, that does not cover it. Use a room or a bedroom or a size or space.
Listen, we're, the back, the back and forth, Roger, please, Angelo, thank you. Nothing, I don't, I don't want to do the back and forth. You guys, we can make a decision on referring this back to the administration, or we can go ahead and deny this. What would you guys like to do?
Deny it. What you have to do.
My motion, I'd like to deny it.
I'd like to, let's take a vote.
All right, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constance.
Oh, Councilor, I've been, when you're done, I'd like to say something.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman, forgive me.
I, I, you know, remember this in the discussion from the beginning, and number one, we've got to be careful. The state won't sue us, but what might happen is, is, is there's been a bill in the legislature encouraged by the realtors to ban any local ordinance regulating or, or banning Airbnbs. So how we, um, structure the ordinance, and, and we can't have an ordinance that outlaws, bans, all types of uses, then we might get sued by a proposed, uh, somebody who's got an Airbnb. Um, I, I think this ordinance was all, you know, playing out, went before the Planning Commission, so I think we referred back to the administration, the city attorney, that we want all Airbnbs registered, and we want no, uh, we don't want any Airbnbs, uh, allowed for rentals for, uh, one week or less, or, or, or words to that effect. So if some older person wants to run a room, one of the, a bachelor room to upstairs in the house and use in the kitchen, that's not included.
Who's gonna enforce that?
The city.
Good luck.
The, the, you know, so, like an upstairs, downstairs.
The argument, the argument here is, Councilman, is, the argument here is happening is. Uh, the argument that we're having here is that we can hardly enforce our ordinances on light and, and trash pickup and making sure people's trash bins are hidden so that they're not seen from the street. If there's three hundred Airbnbs right now in the city of Dearborn Heights, we can't even enforce those.
We have an ordinance not permitting those, not permitting those.
So, yeah.
Point of order, please, point of order.
We'll have to close.
Look, I think we're just gonna take this whole vote, if you vote yes, you support this resolution, if you vote no, you don't support this resolution.
Okay.
Okay? All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Motion fails. Now, I'm gonna tell you, I know, Councilman Saab, that you, you wanna, you wanna move forward on this, and I don't blame Roger for whatsoever on this, but propose to Roger in an email or to this body on what you think this ordinance needs to look like.
I think I'm gonna propose to Roger on an ordinance to go after the current, uh, Airbnbs running in the city.
I mean, definitely.
Violating our ordinance.
We have to define it, though, we have to.
It's, it's in, it's in the backup.
Okay, next up, uh, you know, before we move forward, I, I know this is a lot, I'm gonna have to ask, and I know, Madam Clerk, if I'm allowed to do this, but Jason, I know you're here, real quick, I want to go back, uh, since you're still here with us, to the liquor license that we just voted on. And if you don't mind just stepping up, I just had a couple of questions for you.
I rarely have to raise something to speak, so.
So the Revive Golf Management LLC is a co-license on the Michigan liquor license for the Warren Valley Golf Course. We know that, um, and it was something that was just to me early on, because I remember, remember you and I spoke about this a little bit, and some residents concerned that we're like, well, if we do this, is the city going to miss out on its ten percent, which was agreed in the contract?
No, no, the city still gets their ten percent.
Okay, so I just wanted, that's why I brought you here, to ask you for the record, it's, you know, you know, it's on the recording.
Absolutely.
Uh, this does not in any way, shape or form prevent, no.
Not, no.
The city can't be told, you know, well, hey, you guys don't own it, we're the owners, we don't have to give you guys nothing, we don't have to release it either.
No, look, first, the contract says, and, and the.
Which trumps this.
Backup should say that anything that's not expressly in, so the real issue here is that the, the clubhouse is broken out, uh, into a different address than the pro shop. So now the city can't, or the state can't give the liquor license to the golf course because the pro shop has a different address than the lease. So we have to clear up that the pro shop has a different address than the clubhouse, and they're granting the lease or the liquor license to the pro shop address, right? It says that any, anything outside of that specific provision of just changing the address stays the same in, in the amended lease agreement with the new address. So that includes the liquor provision, but to any effect that anybody's concerned, or that's not the case, I mean.
And it's not about you, Jason, it's, it's down the line when we're not here, you know? It's like, the next person that's, you know, say Revive sells this place in 20 years, and they're like, well, this is what this says, and Revive didn't, you know, we just wanna make sure that we're protecting the taxpayers or texting, you know, our agreement on that. Madam Clerk, I knew you were saying something.
Jason mentioned something about backup, and we only got a single sheet.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why, so like, it was hard for us to kind of like, understand it, because I didn't get any backup. Chief of Staff here, Roger here, Mayor here.
We, we can get you the rest of the backup if you need it, but basically, the one page that you did get summarizes the issue of how it, with the address problem, but.
Roger, you know what's crazy? Here's Jason sends us a backup and we get nothing. Like, just submit the entire backup.
Yeah, I don't.
Because I know the Michigan, the Liquor Control Commission sends you a bunch of stuff. Approvals.
Jason, if you don't mind, can you email me and I can share with the rest of the council?
I actually don't have it, so I didn't provide that.
I think Mariana, Mariana.
In the Clerk's office, needs to have it on the.
I've honestly just been told we're gonna sign a short lease that has a new address, so.
Can we, can we actually, uh, can we approve this amending that we receive, or, just to make sure that the clerk is receiving everything that they have?
Honestly, the, the priority is that we have the liquor license by next spring. I'm okay if you guys wanna table it for two weeks, just to get all the ducks in a row, um, as long as, you know, we can move forward.
I mean, look, you could see, I think unanimously, everybody wants you to have a liquor license.
Yeah.
We just wanna make sure that we're putting all of our ducks in line, we're making sure like, the clerk has what she needs so that, like, because let me tell you what's happening, Jason, in two weeks, right after it comes the holidays, come, you know, Thanksgiving and Christmas, everybody forgets, and here comes spring, and the clerk's just like, everybody kinda moved on, we've already voted us in the past, we tend to forget.
No problem, the check's gonna, when we pay our rent, it's gonna include that liquor commission to the city either way, I have no problem putting that back into the contract, so.
Uh, what would you like to do, Madam Clerk? Would you guys, would you like me just, maybe we can go back, suspend the rules, amend the motion, or we can refer it back to the administration?
Let's refer it back.
Well, you can amend the, the motion to refer it back to administration.
Okay, and then you'll add it back to the 26th?
Yes.
Meeting on the 26th?
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
No problem.
I'm sorry, Jason.
All good.
I'm just kinda thinking out loud for myself.
On the right way first.
So can we, uh?
Yes. Motion to suspend, I motion to suspend the rules.
By the way, I don't want you to think in any way, shape, or form, this is us saying we don't support this. I just say here praising you about how proud I am of you and what you guys have done.
Council Chair, um, I don't mind referring it back to administration, but the only thing is here that they changed was that because I think Mr. Esau did not wanna serve liquor or handle liquor, the pro shop is handling, so they added another, added the city attorneys, and everybody was involved in it.
Yeah, but we don't have any information for any backup, or neither does the clerk.
Not on the liquor license, but we already changed your address, didn't we?
Yeah, we already, that's already done.
The address, it's just that the, yeah, the Liquor Control Commission has a lease that reflects 26166, and the new address is 26140, so we have to correct that.
Did we correct that, does that, does that actually have to come in for the council?
Hmm, that's done by the building department, and then we just have to issue.
No, 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 I'm talking, I'm talking about the contract, I'm talking about the contract. If, the contract was adjusted to say from this address to that address, then the contract.
That's a good question, I think that would be a legal question.
I understand that, but there's, there's another address.
Read.
It, it had to be amended to add, that's why we prepared it, we checked with the liquor commission, we should, we had them come out and inspect.
But are we amending a contract that the city approved?
You're not amending the material terms of the contract, you're amending to add to the liquor, uh, to liquor license into the contract, where we had, I think, O-N-A-D-A before that, we took O-N-A-D-A off, so we're adding them into the contract, uh, onto the liquor licenses part, as.
You know, we don't even need to refer this back to the administration, we can actually suspend the rules, amend the motion, to state, uh, that this will be approved under the conditions that everything is sent over to the clerk, all the proper information is sent over to the clerk. So we don't even have to even amend it, and they have to bring it back to the next meeting, because if you bring it back by tomorrow, then this case is closed, and you don't have to bring anything back.
Council Chair.
If we can hear by the 26th, and the Madam Clerk says, hey, I haven't received anything, we can go back and say, for the minutes are approved.
Council Chair, just for the record, I think it's the administration that has the documents.
I understand, but, you know, this is gonna have to put up, you know, I'm sure Jason's gonna call and reach out to, you know, I don't think the administration here is saying, hey, we don't wanna give this to them.
No, no, absolutely.
It's the end of the winter, we're not gonna get the liquor license before winter, which is, I'll see you guys on the 26th, let's get it done the right way.
Let's get it done the right way, can we suspend the rules and just amend the motion?
Yes.
Or do they have to rescind, uh, the original?
No.
The same meeting, it's still the same meeting.
Okay, same meeting.
Right, it's still the same.
Can we get a motion to suspend the rules?
I motion to suspend the rules.
I second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob.
Suspend, suspend the rule, oh, I do still have it on, suspend the rules to do what?
To amend 11A.
Or to vote again on 11A.
No, to amend.
To amend 11A.
We're amending it, we're not, we're not.
No, he said that's.
No, no, we're gonna amend it, we, there's no need for us to table it.
Whatever you guys recommend.
Council Chair? Oh, we got a vote on it, right?
It'll be motion 24497.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sob, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. I know it sounds a little confusing to those on Zoom and on the audience watching at home, but we're just making sure we're, we're putting the right procedures, you know, forced.
So it's my motion.
No, remember Bill Barr's motion, we're amending 11A.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm the one that.
It was his.
Okay, yeah, oh, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't know what you meant.
So Council Chair, I'd like to move forward and amend 11A to include in it that, um, approval of this is contingent to the administration and Revive Golf submitting all the documentation.
To the clerk.
To the clerk's office for record and city council members.
And before November 26th?
Before November 26th.
We'd have to bring it back before us.
And also probably, the lease does say, but we wanna make sure the lease carves out, the city gets 10% of the alcohol sales.
And the city that, that carves out and gives the city 10% of liquor sales.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you guys have that? George, do you have that?
Do it again.
I'd like to amend the motion, so the ci, the administration. And Revive Golf.
Yes.
To bring forward all documents to the clerk's office by November 26th, and also stay on the record that the city still gets the 10% of liquor sales, of all liquor sales.
That's actually in those documents, it'll be in those documents.
Any other discussion? Motion made by Councilman Sob to amend 11A. Councilman Constant, can you second that?
Yes.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant, to amend 11A ensuring that the clerk receives, uh, the proper documentation and ensuring that 10% is still being, uh, you know, honored by this contract despite having the discrepancy of the two different addresses. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Jason, thank you again, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have to get out of?
No.
Okay.
Council Chair?
Yes.
Since you went back to 11A, do you think I can go back to 11B? I mean, I had a question for, uh, Director Lutland, I mean, mentioning three, we have over 300 properties Airbnb, I'm just wondering, whose name is the C, certificate of occupancy is under?
You just have a question for him.
But, you know, just because a house is registered with Airbnb, does not mean that you have 300 people actually renting out with Airbnb. There's 300 on the website, and only 20 are using them, and you're only having 20 that are being used.
Yeah, well, we don't even have an ordinance, so they, they got inspected, if they're rental, they're supposed to, they have a CFO, rental CFO.
No, but if, but if it's a renter's home, and they say, well, my house not being rented anymore, and I haven't had anybody inspect my house, I'm just gonna take pictures and put it on the website.
And just rent it without.
Without anybody, I mean, that's really, anybody can do that, an investor can be living in Florida doing this right now, we don't know.
So what's gonna happen with those 300 properties, with our ordinance?
Well, I think we need to sue Airbnb.
No, I think, Council Chair.
All right, or I can propose something back to the Planning Commission, maybe they can make minimum stay of 90 days with an inspection every 90 days.
You, you bring up a good point, any rental's supposed to be registered a CFO in the runner's name, so if they're running it every four or five days, so I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, propose 90 days minimum stay with an inspection every 90 days.
Honestly, I think the only thing we need to be putting on is.
Enforcing them.
Nobody should be coming in Dearborn Heights.
We're not a vacation destination.
Sorry, sir, I'm so sorry, I respect you, but nothing from the audience, this is city business, I'm sorry. You're gonna be able to speak one more time towards the end.
So we got, how many, 304?
I mean, we, there's, there's, there are 300 people that took pictures and put homes on Airbnb. That does not mean 300 people are renting out these homes on Airbnb.
Well, that, that, then think about, there's at least 300 residents or more that are affected by this, that live on each side of that, across the street.
100%, 100%, more than 300.
More, more.
1,200 people?
The whole neighborhood.
1,200, that's a lot of people.
Yeah, but we keep it this way, there's no ordinance, they're, they're not going after them.
The ordinance says we're not supposed to have short-term rentals, what more do we need?
Yeah, but they're saying, they're, they're pulling an inspection just for rental property, but they're not having a name for the CFO, and they keep renting people in and out, and they keep telling property, they're building the property, oh, I don't have a tenant, right, I don't have a tenant.
If, honestly, if they're on the website, we should revoke the CFO, plain and simple.
That's actually a great way of doing it. Who's gonna enforce it, though?
Exactly. Yeah, that's the thing.
Probably to assign one person full-time to it.
All right.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on, sorry about 11B. Jason, thank you for your cooperation, for real, thank you. Next up, we have 13A payment, uh, permanent traffic control device, stop signs on Sheehan Drive and Rochelle Street.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the removal of the yield sign located at Sheehan Drive and Rochelle Street, that it may be replaced with one stop sign as outlined in 13 dash A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, almost said Manowavski Maxman. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yes.
So it won't be Sheehan Highway anymore?
No, this is actually, um, that would be on the other side of John Daly, this is gonna be closer to Inkster, but I know, actually, Chief Swob, if I can actually have the conversation with you on this one, um, or if you can step up on this, I just had a quick question. This is great, this is 100% needed, because from John Daly to Sheehan, Sheehan all the way down to Inkster, there was not a stop sign. So now we're gonna be putting a stop sign on Sheehan and, and eliminating the yield sign on, uh, on Rochelle, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Remember that corner house, I believe it was, me and you spoke about this about Chief Hart, we did the whole TIS study, I forget what it's called.
Yeah, yeah.
Fatty Ashkar, and this man has emailed us, called us, I think he spoke with you, he spoke with Hart, um, he is closer to the John Daly area. Is there something we can get somebody to look at, at that, at that corner as well?
Yeah, so we have a study that was, that was done in that particular location, and the study did not necessarily state to put anything there, and, you know, the state law says that you're not supposed to use, um, stop signs to control speed, because it, you know, it works against, um.
Well, not to control speed, but for safety.
But there are clauses that state that you can use a, um, a stops, you can, you can put a stop sign somewhere where there may be some type of pedestrian and vehicle, um, uh, confliction there, right? So if there's a conflict between pedestrians and, and vehicles, um, you don't need a study if you can prove the fact that there is a conflict. So, um, there, there, I'm not saying there isn't anything we can do, but we can take a look at that again.
Thank you.
Because I, I'm tired of hearing Sheehan Highway as well, you know, because I, I actually, I hate when I hear that, um, because I think our guys do a great job, and it's just one of those areas where it's, it's tough to enforce speed there, because it's such a, um, opportunity for someone just to choose when, in, when they're not gonna speed, um, so we'll, we'll continue to work on that and see if we can resolve it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, and you know what, I appreciate you taking the initiative with this, honest to God, I know this is a conversation you and I, you and I have had many times about enforcing stop signs, and not because we don't want people to speed, that's because the kids play outside, like, I, I never played in my backyard, I was always on the front lawn. I remember, you know, uh, our former police chief, uh, uh, what was his name?
Gavin.
I was wrestling on, on the, on the boulevard on Wilson one day, when me, my buddy, and this guy pulled up and yelled at us, and, you know, and then I ended up, you know, tell him, oh, you know, please don't tell my parents, he actually walked me over, told my parents, you know, I used to become the snitch officer, but the moral of the story is, uh, you know, you know, I, I was able to do that on the corner of Wilson and John Daly, knowing that there was a four-way stop sign, and people were gonna stop there. Now, parents are so afraid to even walk their dogs or take their kids on a walk, because, look, we are a growing community, and it's not because we're lacking police officers, it's because Dearborn Heights went from having 40,000 people to 50,000 people to 70,000 people. No police department in the world's gonna be able to stop that, the, the National Guard's not gonna be able to stop that, so the blame is not on you guys.
Yeah.
Well, if we can add and enforce more safety measures, like stop signs, so that people can stop and say, look left and right, because the kid's walking, or the person that's walking their dog, those are important things as well.
And we, we, we've began taking care of, you know, business in, in certain neighborhoods, right, and we have to hit all the neighborhoods, right, but obviously, we can't do that all at once, but I would assume, I don't know if there's any residents who live in this particular neighborhood, um, but we have, you know, an officer that, that took it upon, herself, well, she worked with me, and, and we, um, worked together to determine, you know, um, how much enforcement should be in the area, and, um, the complaints that I've been getting, um, for this particular area are down, right? I think, you know, there's probably still some speeding and some loud noise and whatnot that goes on, um, but, uh, we directed some enforcement here, and, you know, it's really impacted, um, the, the area in a positive way, and we're gonna continue to do that in other areas. I think I talked to Councilman Sob, and I, actually, probably all you, about walking, I was walking up John Daly one day, and a car blew by going like 60, blew a stop sign, right?
That's our free day.
Just walking right, and I was there for 10 seconds, you know, on one day of 365 days a year, and I found that to be horrible, so we are picking up enforcement in the neighborhoods, and, um, you know, I can't say we can fix it all overnight, but I think that we are moving in the right direction.
Council Chair?
You know, I, I wanna just tell you real quickly, uh, John Daly was a destination location for the most tickets written, I think in the state, it was, it was, it was our former police chief as well. Um, and he stood at the corner of Cecil and John Daly. If you did not stop for three seconds. You, and you didn't do one, two, and three, you got a ticket, and let me tell you something, I got two tickets. On the same stop, I got two tickets, because I didn't stop for three seconds, uh, and I didn't have my license, I mean, the, you know, he followed me home and said, pulled me over again, and said, you just did it again, I said, man, I stopped. Moral of the story is, uh, you know, John Daly has always been a place, and so is Annapolis, believe it or not, it's John Daly and Annapolis are two, just, they're just long stretches, people just drive, um, and, and they drive fast, and then they don't wanna stop on the stop sign, and they just roll right through it, but, um, you know, John Daly is something that unless they know that there's somebody who's always going to be there, they're gonna continue to roll through that. And I know, again, we, we cannot stand every single stop sign, I know the men, women, uh, that are working on our police department go above and beyond, so thank you guys for that.
Sure.
Councilman.
Council, uh, Council Chair, I wanna echo the chief, you know, chief, honestly, I've seen a lot of officers and a lot of enforcement there, um, they're doing a heck of a job. I know more can be done, though.
Yeah, thank you.
And I agree, um, it's an opportunity, when no one's around, they just speed through, there was just an accident the other day there, the car parts are still on the corner. It's a very common thing, but again, we can't, officers can't be there every day, but it also starts at home, parents, parents are, are the main issue, buying these cars, um, not discipling their kids, but it's, uh, hopefully these tickets will, uh, will, you know, it's catching on with them, but. We are seeing more enforcement in the neighborhoods, I am seeing more officers, they are pulling people over, you speed, you're gonna get a ticket, plain and simple.
And, and chief, I wanna just say one more thing.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, Councilman, sorry. I wanna say one more thing, you guys did that Ford Road, uh, thing with the state?
Yeah.
I don't know if you have the numbers or statistics of how many tickets you guys came, but I can tell you, I just hang out on Ford Road a lot, some of the businesses there, and every 10 minutes, or maybe every three minutes, somebody was getting pulled over. over.
Yeah, it was like 600 and something tickets within that period of time. I think it was less than a month and, yeah, it was great enforcement.
Imagine if the state continued to fund us. We should call them down and be like, hey, we'll, we'll, we'll be in charge of all the Ford Road and all your roads here in Dearborn Heights.
Yeah.
Fund us more.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you guys, your, your, your staff did a wonderful job. You guys did a great job on that. So thank you to the police officers who also were issuing those tickets because they were ensuring that safety was, and laws were being held. Any other discussion?
Take it for a vote.
All right. Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations to the corner of Rochelle and Sheehan Highway. Next up, we have permanent traffic controlled device stop sign on Berwin Street and Figaro.
Council Chair.
Councilman, Johnson.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the installation of two stop signs at the intersection of Figaro Street and Berwin Street and all-way placards on all stop signs at this intersection as outlined in 13B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Chief. Thank you to this honorable body. Next up, we have comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I want to give a huge shout out and thank you to Clerk's Office for smooth election this year.
Thank you.
And all the hard work you put into months to that election with early voting. Happy Veterans Day to all our veterans. And I want to say that our police officers do a phenomenal job in the city and our city's put together by unions. And we respect the unions, you know, how they bargain, that's something that we don't get involved in. And we understand that the administration and the union got to work out their differences for any position. And it's just the process. I think it's not a position towards anybody or against anybody, I just think the process is not being followed the way the charter is written and, you know, the Act 78. And I believe that if the processes are followed and agreements are made, and it should, it should never have to come to this or anybody bickering or anything, it should just be smooth because I believe the more positions we have in the department, the better the department gets. And hopefully, we can all work out our differences and hopefully, these positions will all get filled up one day.
Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, I'm not done. Also, I still want to echo with the war in Lebanon and Gaza. Again, this administration we have in Washington is absolutely ruthless. You know, their support of genocide and just now, and Joe Biden giving Netanyahu a green card to just slaughter people. It's a shame that our own tax dollars that we work with are going for such thing. I'm glad that the elections went the way they are and I hope there's change coming. And please to all the residents, a lot of leaves are in the streets. Please clean your basins in front of your homes and rain so it doesn't flood. Other day, I was driving through the city, every corner was flooded. Just rake the leaves in front of your house, please. Thank you.
Any other?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair. I would like to echo whatever Councilman Sob said. Thank the clerk and staff for an amazing job. Wish all the veterans a happy Veterans Day and maybe call on all Veterans Association who fought for this country, who fought for the safety of the innocent people, maybe they can call for a stop for the genocide that's happening in Gaza and Lebanon, for a ceasefire for once and for all. And Council Chair, I would like to call, I would like to wish a very happy birthday for your favorite redhead, I think it was yesterday.
It's today.
Today, today, today. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Angela.
He wants us to sing it.
Happy birthday to you. Come on, everybody. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to Angela.
Happy birthday to you. I'll go next. Happy birthday, Angela. That's how I'll start this off. If you know anything about Angela, she came here because she was a concerned resident walking her dog with her, her significant other and just written us and started seeing a lot of blight and, you know, areas where she was riding her bike. Here she is, five years later, hair still red and, you know, growing with, growing pains in the city through her voice and really, she takes a lot in and you're an amazing person, Angela. So happy birthday. I, we actually just had lunch, her and Vince. Vince was supposed to pay, but walked away when the bill came. But, so he wore a Michigan State shirt today, knowing that I had to cover the bill to make up for it, but.
So she almost got a collect pension then, five years?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, she's been here, you know, a lot longer than some of us. She's been here before me.
She's been here longer than five years. She was here when I started out.
Well, oh, yeah, maybe.
That was one of the first residents I met.
Nice.
In her kitchen with a bunch of old ladies all complaining.
Yeah.
Thought, what did I get myself into?
So thank you for, really, for all that you do. You can see that this community is built on the foundation of great people and, and really, we all just want to stay united and stick together. We may voice and echo, you know, you know, differently sometimes. We may come together many times, but remember, everybody has shared the same distress, wanting to see good neighbors, wanting to see less people speeding, wanting to, you know, love your community and be united as one regardless of race, color, ethnicity. So that's what I love about Dearborn Heights. No matter who you are, we all just want to see what's happening good. And maybe, you know, the council may look at it in one way, the clerk may look at it another way, and the mayor may look at it in his administration another way, but at the end of the day, we have this shared concern of wanting to see Dearborn Heights move in the right direction. So, you know, sometimes we may bicker back and forth, but just keep in mind, like I say all the time, being an elected official, being one of these council members, the mayor, the corporation council, the clerk, the treasurer, it's not easy, guys. We are constantly getting phone calls, we are constantly speaking to our residents, we are constantly, you know, hearing the complaints. We're, it's not always the good, you know? It's 99% of the time, we're hearing the bad and we sign up to hear the bad. But just keep in mind that, you know, there's only so much that we're limited to do. And that takes me down to my next point. You know, I heard some really ugly comments today saying that the city council is purposely trying to stop the appointment of, of Mr. Farhat and, you know, the council don't like him. I'm going to make my opinion very, very clear. Mr. Farhat is a phenomenal young man. He is absolutely amazing, other than the fact that he's a Michigan Wolverines fan diehard. But he is somebody that has served law enforcement for 30 years, whether it was Dearborn Heights or not, he served it in another community. And he's served in Ramilis. This is a man that really cares. And what you have to keep in mind, and the administration needs to keep in mind, that there's a process here. It's not who the individual is, but it's what this process is. And this, this process, and most recently, on, you know, the most recent contract, it said, if this position goes vacant, we're going to give it to somebody within the law, within the police department. I know that they were negotiating it early on in good faith, it may have fallen apart. I'm not a part of those negotiations. You know, that, that does not say that we don't hear that, you know, it fell, it fell through. I want to make something clear, this body had nothing to do with any of it. We did not pick up the phone and say, you know, one, two, and three, or the lies they're being spread, it's all a lie. So far, it's a great man. If he gets appointed and this, he goes through Act 78, and, and he goes through Act 78 and, and this gets approved and you guys negotiate however you guys go about it, but I want to also keep in mind, this is something we've been dealing with for a little over a year and a half. We're currently in litigation. We can't talk much about it because there's an injunction. But come November 20th at 4:00 PM at the federal building, there's going to be a judge that's going to hear oral arguments. And I'm going to show up in there and I probably can't speak, but I can tell you that the council's going to be representing to intervene on this. At the end of the day, this legislative body tells you, you cannot spend any money without our approval. Regardless, and I want to go back, this has nothing to do with ethnicity, race, Arab-American, white, none of it. This is simply saying you must follow Act 78, you must follow what the command officers are saying.
Council Chair, if I may, could you not comment on the case or because that begs re, opposite opinion coming forward?
Come on, Roger, man.
That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Roger.
All right, please.
I would say point of order, but you don't listen anyways.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Chair.
Lastly, happy Veterans Day. Thank you to all our great veterans, you know, people that served this great country, kind of echoing, kind of like what Councilman, my Councilman Sob said. Let's pray that, you know, our veterans can ensure that there can be a ceasefire and everybody, regardless of where you live, and live happily and not under the rubble and not under bombs and not under war anymore. Nobody wants war, nobody wants confrontation, everybody wants us to go away. Lastly, to our amazing clerk, this is an individual who has went through so much in her life. She has taken care of her grandchildren, taken care of her children, taken care of the residents of Dearborn Heights, taking care of the Treasures Department, taking care of the Clerk's Department, taking care of the school boards. Madam Clerk, I swear you are my hero and you don't even know it. I, I love you so much and thank you for all that you do. I love you. You're, you're a true fighter inside and out, but thank you for all that you do. And thank you to the rest of the Clerk's Department. Thank you to George, thank you to Dana, thank you to Sally, the individual that came back.
I got them all down.
Okay. Thank you to the entire Clerk's Office. Rock of applause to the entire Clerk's Office. You guys do a phenomenal job. Thank you. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Ladies first.
Ladies first.
I've got to get something off my chest here. First of all, I'm disappointed that as a council, we haven't approved anybody to do the concrete work. The weather's been nice, we could have gotten some stuff done and we're still at point zero. And in addition to that, there was an email sent out to Mr. Ali Deep from Mr. Sob, and I was the only one that was excluded from that email. I don't...
Yeah, you never respond to your emails because you don't have access to it.
You know how to reach me.
No, I, I don't. I've sent you multiple emails, you've never responded.
You're sending them to wrong.
I mean, look, I, this is...
Never mind, never mind.
Guys, point of order. I, I will say, Councilman Sob, you know, respectfully, if everybody's added on there, do add the Councilwoman, but I will also say, I've probably sent more emails than anybody on council and I don't think, Councilwoman Brier, I think you've mentioned to me many times that you don't have access to it, but I mean...
I respond to you.
I, maybe, I don't know, I've never, I don't think, but I also emailed both of your emails, because I know I have both one, both of yours, correct? I have one of your personal and I have one of your city email. I just so happen to choose you, Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, Councilman Wanso, and Councilman Constance, all have two different emails, so I just tag all you guys on all your different emails. I shouldn't be considerate, but.
Council Chair.
I, I also think, real quick, I also don't think that at public comments, city stuff here, you could have emailed or you could have called him prior to this meeting and said, hey, Councilman, but it seems like it's coming out of spite and we need to do better in showing more unity. I just spoke about, let's showing more unity. I don't think you're showing much unity to your colleague here when you say at the public comments saying, you know, I want to call out Councilman Sob. I do agree with you, you should have, but I don't think here was the time and place, but you have that given right, so.
I just found out recently.
Council Chair, just for the record, I've emailed probably a thousand emails. Every one of them, she's been on, she has never responded to an email. Just put that on the record, somebody FOIA that, please.
You're sending it to the city email, you know.
I only, I only email people on the city emails. I don't email anybody public emails or personal emails. I email you on your city given email and you've told me multiple times, you don't have access to it because you can't log on your computer. And whoever gave you that information, you had this information, you should have emailed me back asking me why.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Council member?
No, no.
Thank you. Councilman Constance, you're next.
Thank you, Council Chair. I too want to honor and thank all our veterans. Thank our city clerk for a good job done. What was our turnout, you know, roughly? How many voters turned out?
She, she'll do that, she'll do. Are you taking her thunder?
Don't take her thunder, Bob.
Well, we'll hear about it, thank you. It's, it, a day doesn't go by, we don't hear another horror story about a, a school being bombed or residential area in Lebanon being bombed. I am of the opinion that the new president, the situation is going to be worse. I hope I'm wrong, but let's, let's all speak out. For years, Israel wanted the US to invade and attack Iraq, and they eventually did and we spent millions of dollars over there. Now the talk is to have the US attack Iran and it, it is a waste of our tax dollars, it's genocide and, and terrible human toll on women, civilians, children, so be sure and speak out.
Thank you, Councilman Constance. Anyone else? Okay, I'm opening up to comments from administration. Madam, Councilwoman Brier, do you have any comments on, on the administration?
No.
Sorry, I figured I would let her go first.
That's okay, that's okay. Thank you.
Yes. Madam Clerk.
We just went through our Super Bowl.
Ah, the Lions.
Pretty good. Yeah, Lions are next. Mr. Farhat, I feel the same way as Council Chair said, you know, but it's the process that you're a good man, okay? Now, on to, Councilman Constance asked, 52.19% for this election. 2020, I got, I pulled up 2016 in 2020, one was 60%, one was 62%. So this was lower, but we have more registered voters. I really tried to look for an apple to apple and you couldn't really find one. So however...
It just tells you nobody liked either one.
However, early voting really took off. Okay. In February, we had 187 over nine days. In August, we had 77. We almost had 4,000.
Oh.
So it was...
And that's still low.
That is still low. Election Day really took, I mean, they had 13,425 and then absentee was 8,093. So they have a variety of different ways to vote now. I took the last of the ballots down today because move ballots, which are military and overseas, they have, I think it's six days after the election, as long as it's postmarked by the, the election day, to get them into us. So we waited till the mail today and took them down there, as well as if somebody's signature doesn't match on their absentee ballots, or if they forget to sign their absentee ballots, they have, I think, three days after the election to cure their signature, to come and improve that, that's them and to, to make that right. But we did do pre-processing of absentee ballots, so we got out of here relatively early in the morning on the sixth. So we pre-processed on Saturday and then we did the rest on Tuesday. On Election Day, we had 158 precinct workers and we have some in our, in our, in our...
Round of applause, all 158.
158. We have Karen, Nancy, and it was pretty busy, wasn't it? It was steady all day long, all day long. What's that? It was almost 18 hours. Yeah, was it really? And you guys worked longer. It was, yeah. I got back here from downtown at 5:00 in the morning. So, which wasn't too bad, it was 6:30, four years ago. We have 20, we had 20 members, about 20 members of our receiving board that stay after. Most of those are employees. I try to share works that and I don't know if anybody else on the receiving board. George was the supervisor.
I almost came in.
What's that? You almost came in? Yep. Former Police Chief Lee Gavin was here, he was, you know. And then early voting, we had 20, 20 employees there that worked at the early voting. In addition, I want to thank Patty, Patty at the Berwin Center, our fire department, I don't know who actually put it up, Janet at the PD, Josie at the Eaton Center, and Caroline, or Carolyn at JFK for putting up on their digital signs about early voting. And want to apologize to our library director, Michael McCaffrey, he was, we had a few growing pains. We got these big signs, right, for early voting and we thought, oh, it'd be good at the library. Well, guess what? Even though it's at Canfield, it's nice and big, they went in there and said, asked if they could vote there. So we apologized for that and thanked him for going through the growing pains with us. In addition, I want to thank our back room, which is right behind us, we've talked about them before, Alana, Karen, Diane, Marlene, Barb, and Joanne. We couldn't do it without them. There's so much work. One day, I'm going to hold the class and, and tell you all that, what actually goes into the whole election. Our building and maintenance department and our highway department, as well as, I think our, I think it was highway that did the signs, put the signs up for us. Our police department, and if I get the last names wrong, I apologize. Officer Shakur and Hujay, pretty good? Pretty good? Okay, okay. They were phenomenal. They were here at 7:30 that night, they hung out with me until we went downtown and like I said, we got back at 5:00 AM. They were simply awesome. They were checking the precincts, we had one precinct missing, so they, they deployed something like that, a unit out to the precinct to make sure everything was okay. And I couldn't do it, none of us could do it, without Georgianne, Sally, Kathy, who was our former deputy, came back and...
That's what was Kathy.
What's that? Did you see Kathy? Bonnie and Dana. I mean, it really takes a team effort. It wasn't just me, but it was, it was really a team effort. And then... One more thing, we couldn't do it without the hosting locations, and then I'm almost done. The moral support of our IT department, while we hire our own, you know, election crew for the IT, David did stick, stick around, make sure everything was okay. Building, staff at Canfield, oh my goodness, you guys, staff at Canfield, they were phenomenal because people, of course, they hear it on the news, they're going to show up there at Canfield. It doesn't start until the Saturday, the second Saturday before, the ninth day before. Then, we close it down on the Sunday before the election, guess who showed up on Monday? A lot of people. So, they, they were really fielding a lot of people. Westwood Schools, Crestwood Schools, Dearborn Public Schools, St. Sabina's, District 7, and our Parks and Rec Department, they were all hosting facilities. And two more things, I know I got your approval with, or your, I let you know about the grant that Dana and I are going to get together after and figure out how we're going to spend our 30,000. We got the check already.
Nice.
And last but not least, we got a wire for 118,000 for reimbursement on our February presidential primary. So the, so the presidential primary is reimbursed by the political parties because we're doing that for them, okay? Okay, so of what we spent, I think we got most of it back. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. Best clerk in the country.
I don't know if I can follow that. That's pretty exciting news. First of all, thank you, councilmembers, for approving item nine A. I know that it's like, wow, that's such a small amount, but what I want you to know is because we're spending or using points, which is an asset, any dispersment of the asset does require council approval. So thank you for that.
Thanks for following the rules.
Yes, absolutely. So now, here's our exciting news from the Treasurers world. We launched our new payment platform last week. Yay! It's easy to navigate, you visit the website, you click on the tile that says online payments, and you follow the instructions, very easy to do. Some of the features, I mean, I'm excited, because at our window, we have the new card readers, which are tap and goes, which means we're now PCI compliant. I'm excited about that. But we also take debit cards, American Express, Apple and Google Pay that we've never accepted before, and now we do, along with still Visa and American, well, MasterCard. So we accept those, the card readers are tap and go, I said that. And also, residents, you can all sign up for bill reminder notifications. That's kind of cool. I like to see that someday, maybe we'll go paperless, you know? Do you ever sign up for paperless, no statements coming in your home? I mean, that could happen with utility billing, but I don't know if it will, but it's an option, right? Maybe we'll save some money. If anybody has any questions, please call the Treasurer's Office at three one three seven nine one three four one zero. We're always happy to help and help people navigate if they need it. So we do that.
Counselor Chair.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Treasurer, for the report. So those online billing is just for the taxes and the water bills, or?
No, no, we're moving.
Okay.
We're moving, building departments coming on board.
Okay.
For online things.
What's update on that?
Yeah, and maybe, not to speak for the clerk's office, but maybe animal licensing and things like that, that's where we're moving to make it easier and more convenient for our residents, is what we're trying to do.
We're moving into the 21st century, finally.
Yeah, you know, it's kind of cool.
So hopefully by 2025, we'll be able to order inspections online and get permit?
Yeah, exactly. That's the direction. They're ready, building department's ready. They were waiting on us to be ready. We're ready, we're launched, we're good. We had a few little hiccups, but we got over it, we're good.
Excellent, thank you very much.
So, yeah, you're welcome. Now, also, I've mentioned this before, and I want to mention again, because December is coming, we are having a resident assistance day, remember that? Because of the success of drawing in Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Wayne Metro, Wayne County's Treasurer's, Treasurer's Office with tax assistance, foreclosure prevention, water assistance, DTE assistance, we now have another company, well, actually, there are five oh one C three, a credit counseling that is going to be available at this event. So if you need help navigating how to improve your credit score, or what is your credit score? You know, what's going on with that? How do I read my credit report? You know, credit reports affect you when you're looking for a job, it affects you when you go to buy a house or buy anything these days. So we're going to have somebody there. So we now have moved that date to December nineteenth, and it will have to be at the Carolyn Kennedy Library, because we don't have enough space for all of our vendors coming in. So we're pretty excited, and that's, everybody's welcome, and I want you all to share that. We are going to have flyers and things ready here real soon. We're just locking down some of those final pieces. But again, December nineteenth, Carolyn Kennedy Library, three to seven PM. And the last thing, I don't know, I know, I probably don't want to ruin my thunder today, but we are working on your winter taxes. I know, don't say it, don't say it. But we anticipate having, we're on schedule to have everything mailed out by December the first, as well as the online payments available December first for your winter taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our DPW Director, John Dancy.
Good evening. I just got a couple of things to talk about real quick. So I'm going to get into the usual cadence of the first meeting of each month, giving you guys a short, quick report on a couple of different departments in the DPW, and then the second meetings, I'll probably have a decent number of action items for you guys to vote on. Probably start in January would be my assumption. But tonight, just since I already have some of these numbers, and I'll be able, I'm looking at ways to, I feel this DPW as a whole, before I got here, is doing a lot of work, and it's having difficulty communicating exactly what they do to the public and to the council. So I'm working on kind of compiling some of these numbers and getting them in pretty easy-to-understand formats. So I'll just run through these real quick. For our Water and Sewer Department, the month of October, we responded to fifteen main breaks, five hydrant repairs that had to be dug up and either repaired or replaced, three service line leaks, and last item under the Water and Sewer, we do have vacancies currently and coming up, so any members of the public that are interested in any general labor work, meter reading and/or repair, we're in dire need of.
Director, have we published this on our website?
It's currently going, some of the positions are currently internally posted for union members, get to bid on them first, and then there are a couple that I believe are posted publicly. If they're not, I'll give it to our HR Director, but just as another media to be able to communicate with the public, I talked to our HR Director, either via online or coming to the HR Department here at City Hall, let them know you're interested, and we can kind of get that process going, because it does require to go through Civil Service Commission, and there's a few different steps, there's an exam that's got to get taken, interviews, and it does take a little while to actually get individuals hired into municipal positions. Last couple items, DPW Highway Department, I'll just go through, I'm going to include, as we go on, probably in January, February, a few other items, but just to get starting in very simple statistics, DPW Highway Department trimmed thirty-five trees in October, twenty-seven removals. We spent two hundred and ninety-three and a half labor hours street sweeping. That's going to increase considerably this coming month. Just a couple of things to keep in mind, putting your leaves in the road is against ordinance currently, it does greatly reduce our efficiency when it comes to street sweeping. Right now, this department has three and a half street sweepers, sometimes four. The oldest one seems to fail often, and I kind of equate it to maybe trying to mow like a two-hundred-acre field with push mowers. There's a lot of miles of streets that need street sweeping. We've been trying to do it on garbage drought day. So as another note to any resident, again, against ordinance and kind of our policies, roads off, cars off the road, and garbage cans on the extension help us a lot, because it is, it's just slowing the whole process down when we kind of run into some of these issues. But we're finding ways to work through it, and as I try to communicate to the council and the public, we'll get data sets that'll be able to come up, and like I said, I'm going to try to put together on my cadence to have a little bit more reporting clarification first meeting, and then action items on the second meeting. This deadline of Thursday for the following meeting, we need to adjust so that I can get stuff on agenda items prior to two weeks ahead of time. So I'll discuss either with UMO or administration to figure out when we can kind of change that timeline a little bit. Last couple items, Urban Tree Forest, who's the main tree contractor with the city, twenty-eight removals, seven trims, and they've ground twenty-four stumps, which I know we are backed up, I don't know, a couple hundred stumps in this city. So if you have one, we do have a list going, I'm going to try to put these in format so that council, you can see them a little better, so you can actually see addresses, ratings of trees, where we've been, and where our plan is to go forward, because currently all our street sweeping is on maps, that is effective in the department, but not for communicating it to the public. So I'm going to try to work on finding a way to get that a little bit better format to send out. Last item, concrete locations, so we have roughly forty-eight locations left over from spring due to, prior to me getting here, I think, changes in different contractors and/or leadership positions. Looks like we have about, like I said, forty-eight locations between highway and water that have kind of been left over slash trying to get into current contractors and getting the right communication going between the contractor, our needs as a department, and then invoicing. Last list that went to the contractor included thirty-five locations from water, twenty-two from highway, and five from building and engineering. So we're kind of working with Luigi Cement Contracting, too, who has, to my knowledge, been contracted with Public Works. And that kind of concludes what I wanted to mention tonight.
I will just say, you did a phenomenal job. This is the first time we've had Department of Public Works come before us. John, I know you and I, and you know, some of the council members have met many times, I got to tell you guys, he is really going to go full force, a hundred percent. This man is like the future, and I want you to know, thank you. Thank you, John.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I had a resident, a builder today, reach out to me about a project. He's been having problems with the Water Department for two months, and he had called me in advance and said, hey, you know, I'm having, I think there's a communication issue with the city. Called me after, we, Mr. Dancy, when I met with him today, he calls and goes up to me, why didn't the city send him for, two months ago? He got the problem solved within a couple, like, it was, it was just some paperwork they needed, so thank you for what you do, John.
You know, one thing about Director John Dancy is, and I got to really, like, we need to commend this, his communication skills are on fire.
On point.
Like, he is, you call him Monday at noon, he's calling you Monday, I mean, he is like on point, you're getting a call back on Monday. He's answering, he's emailing you, he's responsive, you tell him about a resident issue, I give him the resident's phone number, he's calling the resident within that same minute. I mean, I feel like we're burning him out, but, you know.
You're there in work hours.
You know? You're there in work hours, you're doing a phenomenal job. Hey, really, thank you. And I hope we don't lose this side, I hope it's not like the first two months, and then we're like, oh, there it is, you know? So we're, we're just going to keep, continue to ride you up. Please step up, state, and state your name, or are you speaking at your official capacity as the emergency manager?
Hussein Farhat, I'm speaking as, in my official capacity as a Director of Emergency Management. I want to speak about John, something you guys didn't know, during the storms, me and him, and Mayor Bazey, we extensively worked on removing trees. We probably, we were not that night. Myself, I was at the gym, and I got called, I went with my sweats, and I was bothering him for the next week with text messages, pictures, and sometimes he was driving, and he would call me, and he got all those trees removed. This is something that I just wanted to add on to the other stuff that he had done for the city. So I know, I probably, like, I drove him crazy, right, John? Okay. And, you know, I was lucky enough to have worked with him also in the City of Ramones together, so, so proud. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, to, just to remind everybody here, I think this is like John's fourth straight meeting as a director who shows up and sits amongst us and doesn't get up and leave after its time. He's staying until the end, which I really, really appreciate you, John, I really do, man. You're awesome. I know you grew up in Ann Arbor, so you're probably a Michigan fan, but, you know, I, we really thank you, man, for real, and we really hope, I don't want you to get burnt out, but this is, you're setting the standards, and it starts with communication, so thank you for that.
He doesn't have anything on agenda, too.
And yes, he has nothing on this agenda. He's just here is because, he said, I want to be here, I want to be, I'm invested in Dearborn Heights. So thank you for that, and that's, it tells you that this is somebody that cares here, and he's not checked out. I appreciate that.
And they did a great job sweeping the street.
Yes, ma'am, there you go. And yes.
Oh, great.
And he's getting Facebook comments talking about him, how great he is, I mean, this guy is the future. Regular work week. Okay, next up, we have announcements was taken care of, public comments. We're going to start off with Zoom, and then we'll move it into the audience. So let's start off on Zoom first. I see we have everybody's favorite former trustee, amazing resident on Amboy Street, Sue Kaminsky.
Hello, council again. Thank you, and I do appreciate everything all of you do, everything our treasurer and city clerk does, and, you know, if, if I complain, just know I do appreciate you.
No, we know you don't complain, and we know how much you really appreciate Sue, and we appreciate you, really.
Well, thank you. Quick question, I do know the answer, but I'm doing this for effect, so who generally swears in a new employee?
A new employee doesn't get sworn in unless they're, it's like elected official or.
Or the director. So for Director Farhat, I know you said council has no decision-making, who would be the one that would swear Mr. Farhat in?
Probably a judge.
What, pause your time. I think the question she's asking is, do you usually swear in?
I usually do. I usually do, as requested by the department.
Could, could technically a judge or somebody else do it?
I think, yeah, 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 because they have for you, council. They have for the clerk before, too, yes.
Ms. Farhat, you want to say who's swearing you in?
I have no idea, sir. If you've got any information.
I don't have any.
She knows who's swearing you in tomorrow?
No.
Oh, okay. He doesn't know either, Sue, so.
All right, well, I just, and Mr. Farhat, I've met him, he's a super personable man, nothing against him strictly about following procedure. As a voting member of Dearborn Heights, I would formally like to ask our city clerk to abide by Act Seventy-Eight.
And that's what I plan on doing.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And, and again, Mr. Farhat, please know that it's nothing against you, and it's strictly, the mayor has to learn that he has to follow the rules, too. So thank you again, thank you, council. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Sue. Mr. Farhat, like you said, phenomenal individual, other than the fact that he's a Michigan fan. He raises his children well, he lives in our community, this is a man that has invested his career in law enforcement. So, again, this has nothing to do with any of that, this is ultimately Act Seventy-Eight. Thank you. Next up, we have the Honorable Barb and Joe, who both have their hands up, both are waving their hands. Ann, please unmute them.
Good evening once again.
Good evening.
Bring up what Mr. Sob had said about the ninety days on these Airbnbs. I think a reasonable amount of time to anybody would be a one-year lease, as opposed to that, so we'd have less turnover, and that, at the end of the one-year lease, maybe do a reinspection on these rentals. You know, at this point, I understand they're not allowed, however, I know that it has to cease, and I think a one-year lease might be more acceptable. And as far as what Roger had said about calling the police, well, that's nice. If they were proactive, and there was one available, they might actually respond in time to get to see something. I know this from my own experience as a police officer, in the city of Dearborn Heights, until I retired in two thousand and eleven, I know how the system works. The police don't see it, and the people aren't looking for it. Okay, so that solution doesn't work, Roger, just so you're aware, until you get more officers that could be available for runs, instead of just two north and two south.
Yes, considered.
Is that right?
I would like to find out, what city does Roger live in, and how many does he have in his city? Because he's hell-bent on having them here, how many do you have in your city?
He wrote what he was asked. He doesn't have to respond to that, but.
It's a, it's a.
Well, if you want to know the answer, actually, I was asked to look at short-term rentals that put an ordinance to protect the city, not to encourage more short-term rentals or Airbnb's. So let's get the narrative correct, okay? Thank you.
The narrative needs to be correct.
And if you want to do police, what I refer to police was if, was if somebody has drugs and prostitution.
Roger, Roger.
I'm just trying to be clear, that's all.
No, you're not. You're trying to change things around to make it work for you. This is not your city, Roger, it's ours. Respect that.
And what about our rights? I keep hearing you talk about the homeowner right that rents it. Where's my right as a citizen of this city?
And too many lawyers.
Too many lawyers, we need people with common sense.
And you're lacking it.
All right, guys. We're done.
We're done.
Thank you. Thank you, Barb, thank you, you guys, thank you. All right, next up, we have the Honorable Mary Beth, everybody's favorite trustee, and one of everybody's here. Mary Beth, you got Leslie Woodless staring me down. You got Tanya staring, you got Tanya staring me down, you got Jacques Janun staring me down, and Mary Beth, what are you doing?
My trustees today.
Hi, Mary Beth Belkowski, Dearborn Heights, Dudley Street. I actually have a question for the Director of Parks and Recreation. I noticed that we have a citywide tree lighting ceremony coming up, and I would like to know why, and I've asked this question before and not gotten an answer, why only Crestwood School District is being represented as the choir and the band, when we have Annapolis High School and OW Vest Middle School in the South End, as well as.
Rovishon.
Why are they not invited to participate in the citywide tree lighting? As a city, we should be including all of our schools.
That's a great question, I know you and I spoke about this. Is our director, Kim? I don't think she's on here. If you want, Mary Beth, send me the email, or I can send her an email tomorrow and ask her and get back with you.
I most definitely will. And then I have one more question for our city assessor, I believe it would be. Of the number of rental properties in the Dearborn Heights area, how many of the rentals are in the South End? This is a research question I need for a college class.
Yes. And if you want, send it in a separate email, and I'll get you that as well, because I don't think our assessor's here, nor do I think she has that and those numbers in front of her.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Thank you, love you. Take care. All right, anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll move it over to the public. All right, seeing none. Just kidding, just kidding, guys. Please step right up, state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have three minutes.
I'm still Keith, I still live in Dearborn Heights.
Man, he said something in my ear, and I just missed what he said, man. Sorry. Restart it. All right.
He lives in Dearborn Heights. I'm still Keith, I'm still, live in Dearborn Heights. And what else do you want? And I live, still live on party, and I plan on dying in that house, God willing. Real quick, this whole Airbnb thing, how many of these three hundred Airbnbs are located in the north or in the South End? So you don't have a number of how many, I mean, there's like three hundred in the city, but where they're at? And this gentleman, sir, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
Roger.
You were talking about legal litigation through the state, because you can't tell a homeowner what they can or cannot do. That's great. All the city would need to do is, if it is an Airbnb, most Airbnb people stay at the most, seventy-two hours, that's it. It's a vacation. It's not a living place, it's a vacation, seventy-two hours. I've never stayed at an Airbnb more than three days. I like my home. Sir, DPW, fantastic job, you cleaned our streets the other day. Unfortunately, Priority Waste came through today to pick up yard waste and they got more of the yard waste on the streets. It's not a laughing matter because we're paying them to do a job. I worked in rubbish industry for 20 years. The equipment they are using to do some of their jobs is the wrong equipment. They are making do with what they have and a lot of it is hand-me-down equipment because I see this one blue truck keeps coming through the neighborhood. They bought that from Republic Waste because they don't have the equipment to deal with with the municipalities they have. Um, but like I said, your crew did a fine job cleaning the streets and it would have been nice if they would have stayed clean after they picked up our yard waste the other day. Or no, today as a matter of fact, because that where I live at, today was our trash day. And I agree with you all and those that expressed concern, the issues in the Middle East. I agree with you all there 100%. In my opinion, it is genocide that needs to stop. I've, I've seen this or I've read this through history. This is the same thing that happened in the 30s and 40s and if people don't open their eyes to what happened, it's gonna just happen all over again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Lee. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none?
Hey, wait a minute. You almost got away with it.
No, just missed.
I had two too, because I emailed you.
Listen, just drink coffee, fight racism and empower a woman.
Hey, you said it, not me. Um, I had two. One was like a city announcement though, but you went kind of fast to Zoom.
Go with it.
So go with it? Okay. I heard Nancy, so I'm going with it. So the first one's for Thrive By Any Means Necessary, which is a nonprofit in the city.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Yes, Leslie Winless, 23469 Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48125. This is for Thrive By Any Means Necessary. Our annual Friends Given, which is the community Thanksgiving event, is free to everybody and it's on November the 22nd from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Annapolis High School. This year is bigger than better than ever. We're having the clothes distribution, which happens from 4:00 to 8:00 for the winter clothes. We're also having authors for social justice and education who are going to be there to sign books and read books. We're also having education town halls on like vaping and suicide and a whole bunch of things. And then our can normal community dinner is from 6:00 AM, I mean, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And then again, admission is free to everybody. That was my community announcement.
God bless you, brother.
Thank you. God bless you too, councilman. You said it first and then I said it second, remember that. Okay, next up is my actual public comment. So my name is Leslie Winless and I live at 23469 Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48125. And I'm here today as a concerned citizen, a community activist, and a school board member who is passionate about civil rights and equity in our city. I'm here to speak on the urgent issue that's affected myself, my family, and fellow community members, an issue that is not only threatens our individual sense of safety, but also calls the question the integrity of the city's commitment to fairness, accountability, and justice for all of its residents. So recently at our local school board meeting, we've seen some disturbing misuse of the police resources following a meeting that became rowdy, which of course we have a loudy, allowed a lot of rowdy meetings in Dearborn Heights, if you've paid attention since 2020. But I believe that is because, um, there are black community members that are both school board members as well as community members who are too loud, that the police is being weaponized against these community members. So this pattern is not only something that's deeply unsettling, but it's personally triggering for me as a black woman and a civil rights activist who has lived in the impact of civil rights as well as police interactions. I along with the black parents feel that our voices are being intentionally silenced and criminalized by the district's position to use police law enforcement at local school board meetings. The actions in the school board administration raise serious questions in bias and abuse of power. This is a majority white school board calling for police presence under what I consider Karen calls, and they are using it against African-American parents as well as school board members, again, who they deem as too vocal. Our police chief recently commented to me that whenever someone feels unsafe, they send someone to the location. However, this policy as well, as well as what he said, is not true and neither is realistic because no matter what you say, you cannot send police presence every time someone feels unsafe. You need to submit, send police presence when it's subjective, when there are no biased feelings, especially when someone who is like myself, has called you and spoke up and told you that there is no serious incident for which the police need to be present. A way to not take sides in this situation, which I communicated with the police chief, is to have the police on presence, meaning in the parking lot or on scene, patrolling the local neighborhoods for crime, um, including house vandalism and car vandalism, instead of sitting in the actual school board meeting for over three hours where they are not needed. To the members of the council and the mayor's administration, our city cannot be a place where law enforcement is used as a tool to silence certain voices while allowing others to speak freely. I urge you to take action, not only to address this immediate issue, but to demonstrate a genuine commitment to fair and equality treatment for all of our residents. We deserve a city government that protects our values and every community member's right to participate in a civic life without fear of intimidation or retaliation by our police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Anyone else in the audience?
Go ahead, sir.
You asked for an additional minute? Give it to the clerk's office, please.
To George.
All right, clerk. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Ron Frenzy live on Fairwood in Dearborn Heights.
Ron, please continue.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ron.
Well, I'll just wait till the police. Okay, the, this, am I all set?
Go ahead.
Okay. The, the city has, the, the city has a police department, fire department, and city workers, they all have their pension plans, which, which is a good idea, but almost nobody talks about it. The total amount of pension money in the pension plans is almost half a billion dollars. Half a billion and almost nobody talks about that. Everybody talks about save $10,000 here, $5,000 here, but this is over half a billion. So how do you actually improve on the results? Well, what I would do is I would ask your money managers to give you a quarterly list of all your securities and an average holding period. List the security, the date bought, the price bought, current price, and that result. And then list all the, all the securities that have a current loss of 8% or more. In 21, in Jan, in July of 21 to 22, the securities in their pension funds lost 17%. It never should have happened. Ray Muscat said that how could this happen? And they never, the money managers never gave him, gave him an answer. But there is a way to limit your losses. The way to limit losses is called a sell-stop limit. It usually uses about 8%. If you use less than 8%, you're in and out of stocks too often. If you're 10 to 12%, then that's just too much to ask for. So you should use up what they call a sell, a sell-stop limit order of 8% where, uh, below where you bought the securities to limit losses. For example, let's say you bought a stock that was a hundred dollars a share, 8% less than that, you'd put an automatic sell at 92. So if it hits 92, shh, you're sold. If it doesn't hit 92, then that's okay. It could go above 100, 105, 110. Then you move your, what they call a stop-loss order from 92 up to maybe 95 or 98. I used to be a stockbroker, so. So this is something, this is a way to, to actually improve that. Also, what's interesting is that in 21 to 22, the, the stock, you know, the, the S&amp;P stand, Standard and Poor's lost like 20%, but the past two years have been fantastic. Last year, the average stock gained 30%. This year, they're up 35%. That's 65% increase in two, in two years. Now, the average stock over 100 years has gone up 10%. So how do you bring, how do you, how do you bring that down? According to Goldman Sachs, it was in, it was an article in Wall Street Journal today. Goldman Sachs says they anticipate only a 3% gain every year for the next 10 years. So that's a huge drop in your investments. Also, besides Goldman Sachs, there was an article today says, what is Warren Buffett doing with his money? So, and then the last, the last part.
Guys, nothing from the audience, please.
The second page is, when I was a stockbroker in the mid 80s, 1990s, I worked with a friend and we used to write an article for the Detroit Legal News called Wall Street, The Week Ahead, and this lists all of our awards. So.
Thank you very much, sir.
Council, council chair.
All computer programs now. I mean, the program does these, these large institutional investors.
Yeah, but they may not do stop-loss orders. You don't have to do it.
It's all what's programmed in the.
Let me ask you this.
Okay, real quick, um, I've been the recording secretary for the general government pension board for at least 15 years. Treasurer Hicks Clayton is on the police and fire.
Yeah.
You're welcome to come to any of the meetings. The pension boards meet every month. Uh, the third Wednesday and, um, for police and fire pension meets the fourth Wednesday. It's listed up front. Um, we do have a money manager from Morgan Stanley. He goes over the asset allocation, all of the monies that we have in the fund every, every, every month. And then every third month, he brings in, um, he does reviews, he has a quarterly review.
Does that information get to all the council members?
Uh, they get, they get a copy of the minutes.
Oh.
They do get a copy of the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. And any commission, any commission is a testament. Thank you.
I know. We can have it after the meeting. I'm so sorry. Yeah, it's okay. Hi, ladies and gentlemen, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, and are you speaking of your official capacity as the trustee or the newly elected Najah Janoon, who just received 5,700 votes in her last election. Congratulations.
So, Najah Janoon.
Thanks, Paul. That's some real nice hands.
Dearborn Heights. I'm not going to keep you long, but so first of all, I just want to say, anybody who's ever met Mr. Farhat has, I don't think I've ever met anybody who's had anything negative to say about him, so.
No, nothing negative.
And as they call him Smiley, there's a reason for that. So, um.
So what's his real name, by the way?
Well, I don't know. We don't know his real name.
Smiley.
So that's how I, that's anytime I heard Smiley, Smiley, I was like, then when I saw him, I was like, that's why he's Smiley. So, um, so I just think that, you know, without residents like Lori Moline advocating for that stop sign on Berwin and Figaro for years, um, I just want to give her credit because I know she, Lori Moline.
Lori has done a lot more. She's the absolute best.
So I just, just because I personally know how much she has advocated for that because there, and I've personally gone and sat at her porch and watched the cars.
Is she all nice, her backyard is?
Oh, she.
Immaculate.
Yeah. She, she's, you know, she offered to come over and help me with mine. But, um, so I just wanted to say thank you to Lori because, I mean, like I said, I've gone and sat there and watched the cars and it's, it's crazy. So it'll kind of give that break. People just have too, too long of a stretch without a stop sign. So thank you to Lori. Um, I know people always have stuff to complain about, but I did love your video, so I'm hoping to see other departments in the future added to that. I think Lynn and Lisa will be like, perfect in the future.
Well, that's just one of many great videos. The first one was an introduction.
We look forward. Like I said, I mean, there's always, there is always going to be somebody who has something